Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple: to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or Meganet.
...that we are going to go directly into executive session, and we're going to be discussing strategy with respect to pending litigation, Scanlon-Fenton versus Falmouth Public Schools, discuss value of real property easements for Martha's Vineyard Cable requested by Instar Electric, DBA Eversource, and also discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Falmouth Firefighters Local 1397.
Second.
And all those in favor of going into executive session?
Aye. Patterson, aye.
English, Braga, aye.
Brown, aye. And I declare that to not go into executive session could harm the town's position with regard to these matters.
We'll return at seven?
And we will return at seven for regular open session. With respect to pending litigation for Scanlon versus Fenton with Falmouth Public Schools, we discuss value of real property easements for Martha's Vineyard Cable requested by Instar Electric, DBEversource, and we discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Falmouth Firefighters Local 1397. We don't have anything to really announce from those, that meeting, just that they're ongoing discussions, and we will meet again to continue our discussions. And I'd like to call this to order, if you all would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
... to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
For recognition, I think Mr. Patterson had a suggestion, and I agree.
Yes, I just wanted to acknowledge the challenges and sacrifices that are being made by the citizens of Ukraine trying to preserve a democratic form of government. It's a tragic situation. I think all of us, you know, feel really some, you know, support, be it just philosophical or than anything else, but just thought I'd mention that tonight.
Certainly true, and I can especially understand, identify that. I have a young gentleman who works with me who's from Ukraine. His mom had to get out of there on a bus because, you know, she was living in an industrial area, and it was very concerning that it would be overrun, and who knows, I mean, it's a real war. She was lucky to get out, so I'm thankful for that. Yes, Angelique?
In addition, I wanted to recognize the DPW for all the work done clearing the streets for this most recent storm. We also did get an email from someone who was very thankful, so recognize the DPW.
And that was a person who sometimes gives us some criticism when we're not doing a good job, so I know that, I really appreciate that one.
Extra appreciation, yeah.
Any other recognition for this evening? Okay, thank you. Next, we have announcements. Are there announcements from the board or staff? Any important meetings coming up that we want to mention?
I think so.
Is this Saturday, Mr. Chairman?
Well, we're going to be meeting on Saturday to discuss town policies, select board policies. We've got a dozen or so that didn't seem to be fit to be posted on the website because they needed to be addressed. We're going to look at that on Saturday, as well as consider a few new policies that we may want to implement. And if that's it for announcements, time for public comment. Folks who want to make a public comment this evening?
Have you guys heard anything about my insurance claim? Because I haven't heard anything.
I don't know.
Nobody.
We actually, so, public comment, it's not, it means that item isn't on our agenda, so under the state open meeting law, we can't respond back to it because we can only talk about things on the agenda. So you can make a statement, we just, we can't respond back to you.
That's fine.
I just, I don't want you to think we're ignoring you, it's just that we can't.
And that's one thing that, you know, I'd like to change, too. And is it, did somebody say something about leaf blowers? Taking away the gas leaf blowers? Is that true? I read something in the paper. I mean, you, that's, you know, if that is the case, then you guys can't, seriously, we got to have other issues to worry about, like code enforcement. I got 18 Brazilians living in my backyard, building, a garage, apartment, I don't know who's back there. Then we got Fresh Pond Road, that's a residential area. Why are there trucks barreling down that road? And you want to know what's funny, is when you go down Fresh Pond and then you get to Mustafa's Road, oh, that one's nice and clear, no potholes, just Mustafa side. So then we got my parents' road, their route. These are private, but they pay taxes like everybody else. They deserve to have the same services. Then I went to go see Mr. Rosado on Child's River. His wife is sick. He has nurses that go through that road. You can't get through that road unless you got four-by-four, unless you got a four-wheel drive, okay? It's disgusting. Private? Come on, guys. Then we got secretary. Do we do anything where we review everybody and, like, department heads and, like, you know, go over and see what their responsibilities are? Who's supposed to do what? Do we have anybody like that? I mean...
Well, she just explained to you our constraints under the public comment.
Well, Doug, okay, I'll ask my questions and go. And that's the thing. Okay, I'm a resident. I live here. I have issues, and I'm coming to you with them, expecting you to do something, not to cut me off and tell me when to stop talking. I'll be done in two seconds. Now, who's, who reviews, like I said, department heads? Who, that, that needs to be done. I don't know who's groaning, but whatever. And who inspects the roadways? Who does that? Lori Dewer, the superintendent, what does she do for $180,000 to $2,000 a year? No, you don't have to answer me, I'm just telling you, those are my questions. Then we got, so, are you guys, you don't have any employees, correct? So are you going to give inmates, like, the non-level?
Are you going to make comments or just give us all these questions?
Crosswalks, East Falmouth and San Anthony's, okay? That needs to be moved up. No one can see that, you can't even tell. You know, it's everything, and that's why I'm running for selectmen, because I'm going to fight for the little man, okay? The minorities, the Cape Verdeans, the Portuguese people, they're going to be coming out of the woodwork, okay? Because we realize that there's minions that are inserted that have not gone yet.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Did you write all that down?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, great.
It's on film.
Yeah, I'm saying.
Any other public comments this evening?
You've all seen me before for other reasons. I'm basically here to talk about the Falmouth EDIC. Back in October, I got a notice in my mailbox at my property at 29 Depot Ave., which described a meeting taking place at the library. Unfortunately for me, that is not my residential address. I should not have been sent a notice to that address as in a butter. But I stopped what I was doing because the meeting was at that very time and place. So I went to the library to the meeting. It seemed like it was sort of a brainstorming session to figure out what to do with the parcel next to the bus station, which is currently wooded land. So, of course, my comments were, why is there a need to do anything there? I didn't really understand what was going on, and neither did the only other butter, Tom Kenny, who happened to be there. That said, my comments at that meeting were not terribly well-received, and it was confusing. A little time went by, I did some digging, some fact-finding of my own. You know, the other people in that meeting were consultants, engineers, architects, town officials, and one a butter, and members of the EDIC. So it was confusing why we were, why I was in the middle of a brainstorming session with all these important people. Come to find out, there is actually a plan for that plot of land next door to my land. It's an 80-unit downtown Boston-style, four-story, microunit, seasonal worker apartment building, which is totally and completely inappropriate for one of the most historically significant areas of town. I'm very frustrated by this proposal. I have voiced my frustrations. I have noticed, I noticed fairly early on that I was among the only folks, among the only person, does that mean my time is up?
Well, we do ask for people to try to keep it to two minutes.
I'm doing my best, but it's a very difficult situation. You can kick me out at any time.
Excuse me, ma'am, are you running the meeting here?
Some, some time went on, and it occurred to me that no one else from the top of Highfield Drive to the bottom of Depot Ave. had ever heard of this. So of course, I took it upon myself to inform each and every person, including the board at Highfield Hall, every business, every resident, every business owner, everyone, all the condo complexes, everyone. It was a lot of work, I did it all myself. It was tough, but everyone was aghast and taken aback by this proposal. Fast forward a little bit, I was elated to find out that the EDIC was having a stakeholders' meeting, and I thought to myself, oh, finally, the stakeholders get an opportunity to speak and be heard. It turned out to be an authoritarian-style webinar where no one could hear each other, see each other, or make comment without typing it first, having it be approved and read, and the majority of those comments were not read. And I only know that because I got the opportunity to speak with the various other residents of Depot Ave.
I'm going to ask you to summarize.
Okay, I'll move as quickly as I can. Basically, the, the way this has gone, the whole process of not informing the people who live in the area, the actual stakeholders of that area, is very disturbing. The proposal itself is very disturbing. I consider myself to be a steward of that area. I'm planning on restoring a 200-year-old-plus building over there. I love that neighborhood, I grew up there, I've been there since the early '70s. There are people in that neighborhood whose families have been there for 100 years. And I just wanted the select board to hear it from me, do my best to speak loud and clear. As it turns out, I'm not the only person who feels this way. There is a petition going around town, and there's rather a lot of people piling up. So I know I'm not prepared with the speech to be super-duper effective in a short period of time, but I think you'll probably end up hearing about it in other ways as well. But thanks for hearing me out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else here for public comments this evening? Being no other speakers, I'm going to move on to appointment of Information Technology Director.
Welcome.
Is that you?
Yeah, one more.
Oh, excuse me. Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Are you coming up, sir?
I think he wanted to make a public comment.
Did you want to speak, sir?
Walter.
Walter, did you want to speak?
Yeah, we'll speak.
Did you want to make a comment, sir?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I want to, I want to explain what I got here.
Okay, very good.
This is a drawing of the fire stations, three miles from Santa Fe, which is the fire station. The one one I don't have on here is Station 6, which is right here. That's the proposed fire station, which hopefully will probably grow. Each one of these circles, as you see, are three miles from the fire station. Right? That's... We have, we have several areas that could be classified as areas for fire stations. This one would be a center point, and that one, I didn't draw it on there, and that way encompasses all of this, go all the way down to Station 5. These, as I said, each one of these represents three miles from the fire station, which is proof that we need Station 4 manned 24/7, two firefighters, permanent addition on the back of Station 4, West Falmouth, secure housing engine. The ambulance, who may as well be there. And, now, we just three or four firefighters, full-time, not part-time, coming from other towns, supplying manpower for our stations. That's ludicrous, crazy. We should have enough money, and everybody carries through all of these. All right? Any questions?
Sir, I get the point. Get the point.
Thank you. Thank you, Walter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to affirm appointment of Information Technology Director. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's my pleasure to have Ms. Dawn Lewis join us here this evening, and I am requesting that the board, respectfully requesting the board affirm my appointment of Ms. Dawn Lewis as IT Director for the Town of Falmouth. Dawn joins us with considerable experience in the academic world, as well as very significant experience as a municipal information technology director, most recently in the city of Fall River. And I would also ask the board's consideration of waiving the residency requirement, as Ms. Lewis resides currently in Westport, and we're pleased to have her here this evening to answer questions that the board may have, or perhaps make some comments, whatever would be the board's pleasure.
Welcome. Welcome. Would you like to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about why you like to come to Falmouth?
Sure. My name is Dawn Lewis.
You can take that off, actually, it makes it easier. We're hoping to get rid of them tonight.
We need to see you and understand what you're saying.
My name is Dawn Lewis. I have over 30 years of IT experience, the last six years in municipality experience, dealing with IT for a larger city. I saw the opportunity to, to, to experience another municipality and to bring what I've learned from a larger community into here, and hopefully be able to resolve any issues or, you know, move technology forward from where they are today going forward.
Okay. I have a couple of questions, if I could.
Absolutely.
I was looking at your Fall River website.
Yes.
And it's not too different from Falmouth in a sense of the kind of the layout and so forth. I got to tell you, I've always kind of complained about our own website and felt like it should always be better, and it's always a challenge to keep up with the technology. So I just want to kind of comment really that I, I hope that we can improve the website, and I hope there can be some way to kind of maybe assist department heads to, or maybe keep an eye on their pages to make sure they're updated, I don't know, I guess we can all do that. I wanted to ask you, does your town have online permitting? Because I couldn't quite tell from the website.
We have online, we have...
What's the matter?
I'm sorry.
Is this going to be her responsibility?
No, I'm just curious if the town has that. Familiarity with it, because we're trying to implement it now.
We have online permitting within the department itself of code enforcement and the groups that listed under there, such as electrical and plumbing and so forth.
Right.
But for the citizens' online portal for permitting, that wasn't implemented as of yet.
But you're kind of familiar with the process, because you've been working on it?
Yes, we're, we have Munis as our municipality software, our ERP system, and we brought in online permitting four years ago, and one of the projects down the road was to do citizens' online portal for online permitting for the citizens to proceed forward, but that has not been accomplished yet.
Right.
We've made a lot of other accomplishments within the Munis package, and the next one that we're working on is Employee Self-Serve, or ESS.
Interesting. Yeah, it's challenging, there's a lot to it.
There's a lot to it. We've, we've made significant leaps and bounds within IT for the city of Fall River. Right from the website that we implemented all over four years ago, it was four years in November, the software package that they were using, or they should say the website that they were using was over 10 years old, and no one was responsible for it. So we took that under our wing for IT, and we set up templates for departments, and what we did is we would challenge them and work with them on a yearly basis to update their information, but we wanted all websites to have the same type of template, so everyone knew where the information was, such as contacts or forms, but the information on each page is the responsibility of that department, but we would update it, we'd work with them if we saw something that wasn't correct or should be outdated.
Great. Thank you, yes.
I see you have a Master of Forensic Psychology?
No, I'm working on that. I was taking classes, I have a Masters in Business.
And, and what do you want to do with your Masters in Forensic Psych? I was just interested in that.
You're the, you're the person that asked the same question. I like to, I was teaching at nights for many years, for over 13 years. I'm just a student, I'm a student as well. I like to learn new things, and what am I going to do with it? Just learn. I like to...
Forensics is fascinating.
Like to learn. It's, it's coming to play with what I'm doing. Done a lot of work with police and fire as well, doing, centralizing all software initiatives and hardware initiatives. So it just helps you just learn about the different people that we support.
That's awesome. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I would just say you have your work cut out for you. We went from just having a system called Top Gun, for, you know, the reason that it was from the '80s, you know, just transitioning from that, and it's been a lot of improvements, but I think so many more things that we can do to make the system more user-friendly and just really intuitive when people are looking for information. We still have a website that can be a little bit hard to figure out where you go. Usually, Peter always says, just Google it, you know, in the search, and it will pull it up, but I think lots of room for the types of improvements you're talking about, about really kind of formalizing the format across departments, and so that's really exciting.
Certainly. It's about working with the stakeholders, and that's one of the things I stressed, you know, working with them, finding out what their needs are, what works, what doesn't work, and how to proceed going forward.
Great. Appreciate your responses, thank you.
I have a question. I'm just wondering if you have any plans on moving to Falmouth or if you're going to stay in Westport.
I like to stay in Westport, I grew up there. It's a small community, and the commute is not bad at all.
Okay. Okay.
Well, I would move approval. Second.
All those in favor?
And I would also waive the residency requirement.
Yep.
Second include that?
Second, yes. Yes, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Welcome to Falmouth.
Thank you very much.
And next, we have Town Manager's Preliminary Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hitting on a number of items that are of some substance going forward. The board has a flow-neutral bylaw, a public hearing this evening, and the proposal appears to generally comply with the guidelines that you have set for variance. This involves a commercial property, and I recommend that the board support it. Scott McGann is also joining us for COVID update, as you're aware, and he should be joining us momentarily when that point on the agenda arrives, which is right after our public hearing process. As you know, Context Architecture is joining us as well for an update on the proposed costs for the new Sandwich Road Fire Station, and we'll be bringing you a draft recommendations on the proposed various town meeting articles later in your meeting. I do understand that you've been, received a number of emails on the historic horse trough issue, which the board will be discussing, and I have respectfully suggested a compromise that I'm hoping the board may well consider as you go through this process. Happy to talk about that later at the appropriate time, if the board so desires. And also, the board has been asked to take a second look at the, at the potential for extending the waiver of your right of first refusal for the Route 151, 31-acre property there. That had been presented to the board an earlier time, and you deferred action on that, and it's been asked if the board would conceivably reconsider at this point. And also, we brought forward to the board the adjusted special events policy, which you had directed at your last meeting, and the last couple items, asking the board to authorize the shared streets grant that the Public Works Department is carrying forward to the Cape Cod Commission, and I heartily recommend, as well as authorization for an MOU with a Coast Guard or Fire Protection Services, which Chief Smith has also endorsed. So a preliminary snapshot at what lies ahead, and I look forward to assisting, supporting, and participating. Thank you.
See, so?
I can read this a little.
A public notice? Yes, please.
Okay, for our first public hearing, notice of public hearing is hereby given that the Select Board, the Town of Falmouth, will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 28th, 2022, 7:30 PM, in the Select Board Meeting Room, Town Hall, Falmouth, Mass., on the application of Milton, Hanavali of Milton's Floors Incorporated for a wastewater flow variance under Chapter 180, Section 56 of the Code of Falmouth, the so-called Flow Neutral Bylaw for redevelopment of commercial/residential property at 231 T-Ticket Highway in said Falmouth, gives a parcel number, and this was published per order of the Select Board and the Falmouth Enterprise on February 11th.
Thank you. And when I look at the request, I see that the flow is reducing actually, from 710 permitted now to 569 109, and that's only because it's coming before us, probably because it's a sort of a change of use from a glass shop to a flooring business. So I would entertain a motion to approve unless anyone has concerns or comments.
We have to do the public...
Public comment.
Comment.
Is anyone here from the public to comment on this application?
I move that we close the hearing.
I would second.
All those in favor closing the hearing?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve?
We have to get the input from the, we have to ask if anybody, did you ask if anyone's here to speak in favor and opposition?
I did.
Oh, okay, sorry, I thought he was just asking if the petitioner was here, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
Okay.
I don't think we need him.
I move that we approve this waiver.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Our variance, I guess it is, excuse me, flow-neutral bylaw and variance, just to be clear.
And application for an alternation of license premises of a season all-alcoholic common victual license, Falmouth Pier 37 Boathouse LLC, located at 88 Scranton Ave., Falmouth. Representative... Scranton Ave., Falmouth. Is there a representative here, Mr. Glenn?
There is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Paul Glenn, representing the applicant here.
Do we have to read the notice?
We have to read the notice. Hang on a second.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended that the Falmouth Pier Thirty-Seven Boathouse LLC has applied for an alteration of premises to its seasonal all-alcohol common victual license located at eighty-eight Scranton Ave., Falmouth. The hearing will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, fifty-nine Town Hall Square, on Monday, February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, at seven-thirty PM per the Select Board. It was published in the Enterprise, February eleventh, twenty-twenty-two.
Welcome, Mr. Glenn. Attorney Glenn, excuse me.
Thank you. Thank you. So I'm here tonight for the applicant, Pier Thirty-Seven. The McLaughlins are both here, Brian and Connor McLaughlin. The architect who made all these changes and presented them to the, to the town is here, Kurt Raiba. And Brian Bork is here also tonight to answer any, help with any questions. So I think, I'll start with what this is. This is just a request to alter the premises where, alter the licensed premises. We're not trying to expand capacity at all. It's just about altering the premises. Now, the premises, normally you would do this before you altered the premises. So that's a mistake that, you know, the applicant apologizes for. But now he's coming to you, he's coming to you tonight to get those changes that have been made approved. Every change that's been made has gone through all the proper channels with the Building Department, Board of Appeals, Planning Board, and the Selectmen have issued a license every year also. So everybody has seen the changes as they've been made since two thousand and twelve. The last time the Selectmen saw this was two thousand and twelve, when there was a change of premises at that time. So it has changed. Most of the changes have been for safety reasons. There was one problem where there was too many people, not in the building, but too many people in one room. And the result of that was a change in two thousand and fourteen, where some of the walls got knocked down. And the capacity was just for, and there was just one room where you didn't have to keep track of all of that. And Selectmen, planning, everybody was aware of that. We made the changes. We just didn't alter the license, the licenses. A bigger change happened in two thousand and sixteen. They went to the Board of Appeals and get approval for that. Well, it's certainly out in the open. It was all approved. They went to the Planning Board, the Board of Appeals, and had permission for that change, too. So we're not looking to change anything that isn't already there or add capacity that hasn't already been signed off on for some time. The other thing, this is just for one-ten. It's not for, sorry, it's the other way around. This is for eighty-eight Scranton Ave., not one-ten Scranton Ave., okay? There's a COVID expansion that existed that we're not dealing with. That is not part of it. That went into one-ten. That went in and part of that building in one-ten was used on a temporary basis during the COVID thing. We're just looking to get approval from the Selectmen for the changes that were made pre-COVID, going after he went through all the proper channels of the Planning Board, Board of Appeals, and Building Department. It's my understanding that the policy of the Selectmen has always just been to look and see, is this an appropriate place to be licensed for alcohol? And then you leave it up to the, to the Building Department to determine what the capacity is, what the capacity can be, based upon the building plan. And they've done that every year. And we're not looking to change what's already been approved. You have plans there, some large ones. The only thing that might confuse you in the plan, where it says five-hundred-and-thirty-nine, the, what's been approved is four-hundred-and-seventy-six. Five-hundred-and-thirty-nine represents a number that could be approved based upon the size of the building by the Building Department. But for other reasons, with parking and other reasons, they just went with the four-seventy-six. It's not so much a safety reason, was the zoning reason why they, why they're licensed for four-seventy-six. So that would be the only thing. It's three-hundred people for eating. Then you take away the seats and it becomes four-hundred-and-seventy-six people for dancing sometimes and just it's, and to be served alcohol, too. That's in a nutshell. You probably have some questions for me there that either I or somebody else can answer.
Well, we do have concerns raised by the Fire Department and the Police Department regarding perceived increase in occupancy, because we haven't seen the request, so it hasn't been run by them. I know it went, as you explained, to ZBA, and they approved their part of it. But this is the first for us, I guess. And then, can you tell me when the occupancy was changed from, was it one-forty-six to four-seventy-six?
It was one-fifty-six in two thousand and twelve. And two thousand and sixteen is when they, they did the major renovations and it went up to four-seventy-
Three-fifty and four-seventy-six at that time? Is that right?
Three-hundred and four, three-hundred seated, seated, and four-seventy-six total.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, please. Go ahead.
Just a, I guess a point of order. I noticed on the application checklist, it does not have a butters notification checked.
Excuse me, can you lower your mask while you speak, because I can't hear you clearly.
Oh, sure.
I agree.
Sure, thank you.
And all of you, could you, would you mind doing that?
Sure.
Because I cannot hear you at all.
Okay.
Sure, thank you. My question was, I noticed on the alteration of premises application checklist, I don't see a butters notification checked. And I didn't know if that was just a clerical error.
Well, when you apply, you haven't notified them yet.
Okay.
But we, before we applied, we had obtained the list from the assessors office of who the abudders are in a church within five-hundred feet. That's who had to be notified. And we did.
Okay.
Yeah. And I was gonna give these to Diane tomorrow, unless you want to see them tonight. We, there's only one, one group, the Baptist Church across the harbor, that other than the owners, they own the abutting property, too.
Right.
So, but I have it back, I have it back from the church, and I can submit that to Diane tomorrow if you'd like, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So I just wanna make sure if I'm understanding this correctly.
Yeah.
So in two thousand and sixteen, when the restaurant was, I guess, renovated and the occupancy was increased from one-fifty-six to four-seventy-six.
Yeah.
Oh, is that when, is, so that's when we never did see it here? That's when you went to the ZBA?
You didn't see it here. You saw it here when the license went in front of you. And it was signed every year by the Selectmen. Not, not you individuals, but every year the Selectmen did sign-
On our list.
On, often the license. But they didn't come before you to, to alter the premises before they altered the premises.
And that's why the reason it's triggered the response from fire, rescue, and police with the negative referrals here?
I'm not sure. I mean, those are matters that, different. There was a problem last, last summer, and they paid a fine.
Well, I don't mean just that. I mean, I think this is the first time that they've been officially notified of this action, because ZBA doesn't notify the police.
No, they don't. Right. Well-
I think that's where this is coming from.
The, okay. Kurt, Kurt, this is Kurt Raiba, the architect in the project.
Okay.
And he might have better information.
So I'm Kurt Raiba, I'm sorry. Kurt Raiba, architect from Catalyst Architecture and Interiors in Yarmouth Port, but also, he's Falmouth resident. So I've been helping with architectural and permitting issues at the Boathouse Restaurant since two thousand and twelve. So that first plan with the first seating plan, that was the last one that was with an altered premises permit before the Board was way back then. We did all the drawings and along with Tom Bunker, we went to Planning Board, Zoning Board. So during that process in two thousand and sixteen, where we expanded the deck and made alterations to the inside of the building as well, we're all in cooperation with, multiple meetings with, here in the Building Department, with the Fire Department. So it was only after they agreed that the deck and the fire egresses and the exit lighting and the large patio door was added, all those things together were what, were approved in concept in a meeting here in the Building Department with the Fire Department. So their, their comments were also heard as part of those planning and zoning permits. So the building for dining, because of tables and chairs taking up space, is posted at the three-hundred number. But in the after-hours, when staff removes table and chairs, the agreed occupancy is capped at a number of four-seventy-six. And as Attorney Glenn mentioned, that's due to the plumbing code, because we only have a certain number of bathrooms, so you're only allowed to have a certain number of occupants, and also by restriction on parking, which was set by, I believe, planning at the time. So since two thousand and sixteen, that number's been pretty steady. And of course, as I mentioned, multiple meetings here during the design process with the building official, who was Mr. Gore at the time, and the Fire Department. And then Mr. Gore actually, I think, retired during that process, and Jim Brandalini did the sign-off of occupancy in two thousand and sixteen.
Do you have a question?
I don't, so, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Let me go ahead. I'll ask my second.
Okay. So I didn't read it actually as concerns that they hadn't been included in the process. I read it as post-two thousand and sixteen violations and concerns.
You asked him to take off his mask, but you-
Okay. Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So post, I read it to be post-two thousand and sixteen violations that the, Mr. DeMello from the Fire Department was bringing to our, our attention. That's what we had. So I didn't see it so much as a description of not being involved in what you just described, but rather concerns they had after about, you know, some safety, building safety checklist violations that had taken place. That's what I think they brought before our attention.
So an operational issue rather than a building permit issue?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's more what I think was brought to our attention.
So that kinda goes to my question.
Okay.
Sorry, I know another question's coming. I just wanted to take one second to address that.
Okay, go ahead.
Connor McLaughlin, general manager of the Boathouse. We take full responsibility. There were some checklists that were missed during the course of the season, but it wasn't, it is an overall safety concern, because the checklists are part of a safety protocol. And we recognize that. We paid a fine for that. But it, there wasn't many occasions, there's only one that I can think of in the last five years, where we were cited for a genuine over-capacity issue. And it was by twenty people in a crowd of five-hundred. And even in his statement, he said, there can be some issues, because people were moving and we were doing an estimation.
Right.
But again, we own a piece of it, and we missed a few clerical points and missed a few documents in the season.
And how about the checking IDs that he also listed?
No, we, we had a checking ID, but usually we have a digital scanner that we put the ID in and out of. And it had, frankly, it had broken in the middle of last year, and it's an eighteen-hundred-dollar unit. And I tried to make it the last thirty days without it, hand checking IDs, which is totally valid, but, but didn't have it operational on, on the weekend it showed up, because it had broken before that. And I was hoping to replace it in the off-season.
My question's an operational question also. You have on your drawing a stacked dining furniture in three different places. Is that when you stop doing the dining hours and switch over to your wide open?
Yes. We actually stopped dinner service at nine-thirty in the evening, ten o'clock, nine-thirty on like a Friday and Saturday evenings, because it gets just too much. It's not a pleasurable dining experience at that point. So then we have, when our security staff arrives, they start the process of arranging furniture and moving things around to make room.
All right. Any other questions from the Board? Yeah?
Just want to clarify that the pocket, which is, I think, at one-ten Scranton Ave., I just want to clarify this, because we did have a question about this from Mr. DeMello. That's not included in your four, whatever number we want to use, the three-seventy, the three-thirty or the four-seventy-six?
Four-seventy-six.
That's a separate, that's a separate license that you're working under from COVID?
That was actually my COVID seating plan, and the number was included in the four-seventy-six.
Okay.
Last season, we would close that area at nine o'clock at night and shut it down. That way, to not have an issue of managing a capacity that, over such a large space. The goal would not be, not to do with this meeting, but the goal is not to increase the occupants in the property today or in the future. It's hopefully try and find a way to rework things.
So when you mention alteration here, that's really just the previous alteration that's already been done?
Correct. It's trying to get to two thousand and nineteen, because again, I just wasn't aware that this process was, was part of it. I didn't, and that's my fault, but I didn't know that this alteration step had to be taken. We had gone, we had been in discussion with all the departments except for you guys. And again, I apologize for that. And-
And to be honest, I remember-
And issuing the licenses every year, I thought that that it was, I didn't, I didn't-
Somehow I remember the, the plan. I remember seeing the deck and so forth. So even though it might not have been really checked off, I know we were, we did have knowledge. Does anyone want to speak, Mr. Clarkson?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, my name is Troy Clarkson, and I live here in Falmouth at forty-five Trumble Road. For the record, I'm here not in any official capacity. I'm here as a friend of the McLaughlins and someone who has experience in Chapter one-thirty-eight. And I just, from my perspective, to perhaps put this in, in the simplest of terms, I would consider this a housekeeping issue. Because with full knowledge of the town, the McLaughlins have operated this expanded premises for several years. In fact, I stood here in this room with the McLaughlins a couple of years ago, when they were addressing some of the security issues that they then addressed with conditions that were set by this board. Not every member that's sitting here now, but by this board, conditions were set to increase the safety and, and the security around that site. And that was for this full capacity and this amount. So I think the issue is probably the responsibility shared both by the McLaughlins and the town in making sure that the licensed premises caught up with the occupancy that had been approved as part of the license every year. And, and so I think it appears as though we're headed in that direction, but I think that puts it in its simplest terms, so that the, the public, those watching at home, understand this is not an expansion of the use, but rather the paperwork catching up with the use that has occurred for several years.
And I think that also led to some confusion, because the, the paperwork mentioned that five-thirty-nine number. And I think the police and fire may have inferred that that was an increase in capacity.
Right.
Given the potential concerns, that's, I think, why you got the negative referral.
Yeah.
I think there was a little misunderstanding with regard to the paperwork.
Makes sense.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Comments from staff? Anything that needs clarification? Seems like we're understanding it. Any more suggestions or comments or questions from the Board? Anyone in the public have any comments to make? Thank you. And-
I move we close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor closing the hearing?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve this?
I'd move approval. I think, I agree, it's a bit of a housekeeping. I think that the, the owners are well aware, maybe there's a little bit of a spotlight sometimes from, from fire and from the Police Department, as they should be. And I think it, as it was presented, raised a few concerns. But you've explained tonight that there's really no change that's taking place. So I think this is just getting everything in order, and it will be, you know, it's important to just make sure that all of that information is in each department that it needs to be in. And I know it can be sometimes confusing process, but happy to have it updated here.
I'll second.
Just please remember to take those tables out of there when you're having the big party.
Okay.
Can I just say one thing?
Certainly.
Overserving. What are you guys gonna do about that? Overserving?
So that's a separate, that's, if there are complaints that go, that has a certain process that that goes through?
Yeah. Well, they, I mean, they need to work on that, because it's crazy.
Okay, thank you.
There's something.
Okay, so-
I think we just need to vote.
All those in favor?
I'm sorry, who's second?
I second.
You second, okay.
All those in favor then?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Boyd. Thank you, Mr.-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Application, number three, application for alteration of the licensed premise of all alcoholic club license, Falmouth Yacht Club Incorporated, two-ninety Clinton Ave., Falmouth. And we did receive a letter- And we did receive a letter from the applicant requesting to withdraw without prejudice. So we'd like to have a vote. If the board's in favor.
Ma'am, excuse me for a second. It might be easier if you're here. It's hard, this room doesn't have great acoustics. It might be easier.
Will you ask us to take our masks off? I don't understand.
Ma'am, we're not asking you to take your mask off. We just give people the option at the podium if they'd like to when they're making a public comment. Nobody has to take their mask off.
Move up front. Okay, I'm making sure I move up front. Have a good night, guys.
Thank you. So the application for Falmouth Harbor Yacht Club is asked to withdraw without prejudice. Is there a vote, a motion by the board to accept?
Mr. Chairman, they're also asking if the board would waive the one-year limitation.
Oh, certainly.
Oh, we just did that the other day, right?
Yeah. So if there is such a motion, I would entertain it.
I would so move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? And then business, 815 COVID-19 update and discussion of mask mandate from Scott McGann.
Oh, no, it's off.
The actual request is not that you remove your mask, it's that you wear the mask. Maybe a misunderstanding.
Yeah, I'm just going to take it off because this might be a little easy to hear me. So good evening, I'm Scott McGann, your health agent, and we'll do our update for the week and get to talking about this. So our case count for this week is eight halfway through the week. So we've had three decent weeks in a row, very typical, the county seeing the same numbers, the same drop. So, you know, that peak of Omicron is gone. No, don't know what the future's going to hold, but that's where we are right now. Our incidence rate in the middle at 16.3, that's going to drop because if you look at the upper right hand, you see it's the, the data is from the 6th to the 19th. So it's a little late. We're already at the end of the month, but the state does it that way. It's a little bit of a delay. So it's capturing if I go back up, if I can circle, if you see the circle, it's capturing up in this sort of range in here. So that's dropping. It will drop as a result of last week and this week. Also, our incidence rate is sort of middle of the road for the county at five, little above the state where our incidence rate's below the state by a fair amount. So that's kind of where we are. So we're in pretty good shape right now with our cases. Our hospitalization looked great at this last report of 223 with one and one and four and one. That's sort of been a baseline when you get, you know, with what we have, the amount of cases, that's about right. One thing I always love, this is my favorite slide, it shows 447,000 out of the 200, out of the 5, 270, 5,270,000 cases have been breakthrough, which is 8.5% of the population. But of those breakthrough cases, only 1.61 hospitalization rate among those that are fully vaccinated. I think that's a key because when you talk about tonight, whether you'd like to, you know, maybe, you know, change your, what you want to do with mask mandates and so forth, that's one of the reasons why the schools and the state and the CDC have changed is the hospitalization of the deaths are quite low if you've chosen to be vaccinated. This doesn't apply to you if you have not, but this applies to you if you've chosen to be vaccinated. Our vaccination rates are great where 84% of all eligible residents are fully vaccinated. We're averaging between 250 to 300 for the last few weeks for a second booster doses in Falmouth. So we still make slight gains here and there on that. So that's it for cases and where we are with that and hospitalizations. I used to do this chart. So if you watch what I do on Friday, I came up with this chart every week and this was the CDC metrics for whether to have any further mitigation. I put a big X to it because the state never really adopted it, but we didn't have anything from the state. So I looked at CDC and went with them. They've taken this out and what they've replaced it with is this. So I like this because it's taking into account case counts, but what it's also doing is taking the severity of the disease into account. So that's what the key is. I think the key is, is not, you know, nine million cases of light disease. It's more about how many people get hospitalized and how many people are worse off than that. So what it takes into account is if you're at a population of 100,000 and you have fewer than 200 cases over seven days, you can either be in the low, medium, or high risk based on your hospitalization rate looks like. All right? And if you've got 200 or more, you can't be low. You can either be moderate or high and based on your hospitalization. Don't know what the state's necessarily going to do with this. This is the CDC. Usually the state comes out with sort of their own, if they may or may not, I don't know. I have a call every Tuesday with the state and that's at 3 o'clock. We'll be on it. We'll see what the, Dr. Brown from the state has been the person I listen to the most throughout all of this, the lead epidemiologist at the state. And she'll probably come up with what, you know, the state's thinking about this. Or just say it's great, we'll then use it. So looking at that, right now, possible county is considered in the low category. What does that mean for face coverings? Wear a mask based on your personal preference and your own personal level of risk. Medium would be if you're immune compromised, you should consider it or live with a social contact of somebody who's high risk at the medium, but still at the medium, they're not saying full mandates. And then at high, they're talking now, you want to consider masks in schools and masks elsewhere in the high sort of category. And so if you remember going into last week, the, actually, it's been two weeks now, the schools have let that expire. Today was the first day there was no mask mandate in the schools. Back in May, you had the, we had the mask advisory with the Board of Health and Board of Selectmen both jointly saying, let's have a mask advisory. And then right at the beginning with the Omicron surge that we had at the beginning of the year, the Board of Health recommended that the select board adopt a mask mandate in town-owned buildings. They have not met, they don't, we don't meet till the 7th at the Board of Health, so anything I talk about wouldn't be, I have no, the Board of Health hasn't taken an option or opinion on it just because we're off. Usually we meet on the same night, we're off this time. We had a three-week break from our last meeting. So that's where we are with COVID.
So what's the sense of the board? Are you tired of these masks? Is there a question?
Yes, I have a question. Well, I wanted to bring up the comment that my largest concern was going to be about senior center, but we do have a message from Jill saying that she was supporting the mask advisory rather than the requirement. But I'm wondering about employees in Town Hall. I'd like to know from Town Manager's Office if there's any concern from employees here.
Well, thank you, thank you for the question. There's always a concern. We've had a mask advisory in the past in Town Hall and I think the feeling of Town Hall employees and other administrative offices is the mask advisory worked very well in responding to the situation as it presented itself. And the masking requirement was very important during the time it was in place by, put in place by this board. But I think based upon past experience, the general feeling is a mask advisory has been and continue to be very effective if the board would deem to move in that direction. And I certainly recommend that for the board's consideration.
And if I recall, if there is a need for a mask mandate, that Scott has the authority to do that before we can vote on it, is that correct?
Or in conjunction, you know.
Okay, but if.
He has the authority to institute it.
So if I could, if I can clarify, I do and I don't, I would have to get a retroactive vote of the board. And that would be, but normally we would have, we would see it coming. It's not, this isn't 2020. We know, we can, we can see things coming. You look at data from both Israel and in the UK, you can kind of tell what's going to happen to us in a very short order, usually three or four weeks. So we'd be able to start that. And we don't know what's going to happen. It might just fizzle out in the next variants or colds and, or the next variant reacquires the ability to get the lower respiratory like Delta did and who knows where we'll be. But yeah, we can, you know, I guess the buzzword of 2020 was pivot. You know, we can pivot as needed, that's not a problem. I just think we're at a point, look, and this is what I said to the school board. In 2020, we wished for a vaccine and we got it. And in 2020, when we were wiping off our Amazon boxes, we were, you know, hoping for, you know, it to become milder over time and at least the latest variant has. And we have treatments right down and the treatments we really haven't, aren't widespread, but they will be, at least according to the state, be very widespread, very short order. So all the things that we wanted in 2020 were sort of gotten by now. And it's, and all these guidances for mandates and so forth were supposed to be temporary. And at some point, they need to be, you know, they're not permanent, you know, fixtures. And at some time, you have to start thinking, when's it time and when to enjoy the fruits of your labor by having high vaccination rates? And actually in Falmouth, relatively low infection rates per a lot of other places around. And so I think it's time to, you know, reap what we sow and you can, you can, you can consider that and you may have to go back on it. It just, you know, we can, we'll know when to do that.
Thank you.
Yes. Sorry. You want?
No, just saying thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I guess the question I, in my mind, I was struggling with is, that I was struggling with is whether we should jump ahead of the Board of Health because I sort of feel like we should defer to their recommendation. That's what we use them for, right, is advice in a matter like this. But if you feel comfortable, and I did listen to that school committee meeting where you and Dr. Parkinson actually suggested that in fact it's time to relax everything and make it a personal choice and not necessarily anything close to a mandate. So are you advising us that you think it's fine for us to go ahead and drop that advisory mandate kind of advice?
Well, the advisory is basically what the guidance is. It's saying, you know, look at your own risk and evaluate your own risk and we advise you that, you know, I mean, you can do what you want with the advisory. I'm saying, yeah, I mean, I'm not speaking for the board. This makes it be clear, they didn't take a vote on it. But in my opinion, yeah, I mean, I think you need to consider not having mandates in place so that in times that you need the mandates, that you don't have people tired and quite frankly aggravated about wearing masks or whatever other mitigation you're thinking about. So you might as well do what you can do now. I don't know what's going to happen. I thought in last June it was over, didn't you? Right? So I think we all thought in June it was and then Delta crept up and now we have Omicron and, you know. And again, I like the fact that we got to look at hospitalizations because, you know, Omicron was a bear for case count, but it was not necessarily a bear for the other things. So I think looking at it more for the severity of the disease rather than, oh, we had 100 cases this week, oh, we had, well, if we had 100 cases and 97 of them were easy, then, you know, what are we doing? So I think it's time to look at that and, you know, if we have to change, we have to change.
Yes, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think, you know, we, it's all about being responsive to the data and that's what we've tried to do. And the data now asks for something different, which I think is to give people respite, give them a break so that when, if hopefully it doesn't, but when those emergencies occur, there's a freshness to that that people respond to. If it just becomes, it's something we're doing every second of every day, it's like when they had that code system of like yellow, I mean, we still have it, but, you know, if it was just red for the terrorism scare all the time, it doesn't mean anything. So, you know, we need to have that adjustment. And I think that the data supports sort of a lowering of that threshold. And obviously, as you've noted, you're watching it and if we see trends in the wrong direction, we'll, we'll go in that direction. But I do think that there's a fatigue that comes along with it and that's just human nature. And so I think if we want to be able to have that toolbox or that tool in our toolbox to respond should we need to, this is part of that.
And, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I, I'm basically in agreement. I feel comfortable myself, but I am concerned about the staff members in this building in the Town Hall. And there are some that may not be able to take the vaccinations or for whatever reason have chosen not to be vaccinated. And they have to work in this environment. And so I guess the question I have is, should we continue as Julian has recommended to have a mask advisory for Town Hall?
But nobody at any time, I mean, anyone at any time can continue to wear their mask as an employee or as someone coming in to do business. And I think that's all the advisory is. We just say, if you fall into the categories that Scott just showed us or someone you love falls into those categories, you may wish to mask and that's, and that's your choice. And I think folks in Town Hall, I'm sure it's going to be a supportive environment if people continue certain individuals to want to mask.
And I don't think we have any plans to remove the barriers and the plexiglass and so forth that we've installed, right?
Absolutely not. They'll all stay in place.
Right.
Safe guards for employees.
Go ahead.
And the public.
You know, I think that, I think it's important that we recognize that, but also recognize that in the summertime, when we get a whole slew of people coming from out of town where maybe the infection rates aren't as low as we're enjoying here, that, you know, we need to think about protecting our, our staff members or at least allowing them to protect themselves.
Well, I would entertain a motion to change the mask mandate to a mask advisory if there was such a motion proposed.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
But just remember with that vote that the 1918 influenza had a fourth wave and it was pretty impactful because everybody thought it was over. So they might come back, don't throw them away.
I'm mouthing the word stomp.
Don't say it.
Don't want to jinx us, but it could happen.
Yeah, there's, you know, past performance is no indicator of future.
That's right.
Okay.
With anything. Fires are, or humans.
Who needs history?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And now we have an update and presentation on total project cost estimate for Sandwich Road Fire Station. Welcome.
Good evening. We have our architect from Context here, Jeff Shaw, and our project manager, Steve Kirby, here to give you an update and presentation. It was in your packet that you received on Friday. So I'm going to call them up while I input the presentation into the computer.
Very good.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Jeff Shaw. I'm principal at Context Architecture.
My name is Steve Kirby. I'm a senior project manager for Vertex as your OPM.
And the presentation we have tonight is very similar to the public presentation we gave a few weeks ago. It just brings everybody up to speed on what we've been doing with the fire station committee. And then at the end, Steve will go through the numbers, which you all have in your package. Let me see if I can, just through here. Okay. So the, is there a way to page this? Give me a second here. So the building committee, as you are well aware, consists of the members here on the screen. There's also town staff participating and members of the fire department that have participated in the study. And as you can see, both Context and Vertex, the architect and the OPM for the project. I'm certain you're all familiar with the site. On Sandwich Road, we've done a number of site studies, including a survey of the site, geotechnical work, as well as a hydrant flow test. So we have a certain amount of data about the site to influence our thinking as we have started the design and the cost estimating. There's just some photos that were taken around the site. As you can see, it's pretty heavily wooded. There's some trails through it, playground and playing fields to the north and the church to the south. First step of the project was to go through a program review. We put together a space needs program, working with the fire department to determine the minimum space needs for this particular station. We looked at the staffing, we looked at the equipment needs both now and into the future. We looked at the building code, NFPA codes and regulations, as well as best practices for design in current fire stations. Many of you may be aware or have seen reports of cancer in the fire department and part of our job as architects, designing these buildings to make sure the place they live is as healthy as possible. So there's certain strategies we involve to do that, also including stretch energy code. The initial site concept, site plan here as shown, puts the building towards the southern end of the site. We worked pretty closely with the committee to make sure that how the vehicles moved about the site and the headlights that might come out of the building wouldn't disrupt the neighborhood as minimally as possible. We also sighted the building far enough back that it's not right out at the street. The trucks have enough room to come out onto the apron out front or not and have time to decide which way to go or be able to be serviced on the apron. to decide which way to go or be able to be serviced on the apron. You can also see there's some parking for staff at the back, and there's generous area around the site for the particular site engineering for stormwater and septic. The illustration makes it look like we're flattening the whole site and cutting down every single tree. That's not true. We would be retaining as much of the existing growth as possible, considering the grading and other site mitigation we'd have to do, but we would also be landscaping the site after we're done. Landscaping would be designed to be as low maintenance as possible. That's one of the requirements, requests from the fire department is to really reduce the amount of maintenance and upkeep on this entire project, both the building and the site. You can also see in the site plan that we've shown little tiny squares on the roof. Those do, in fact, indicate solar panels, although currently in the cost estimate, they are not, they are included as a separate item in the cost estimate. But we are designing this building to be as sustainable and as energy efficient as we can make it within the budget that we have, trying to use all of our resources, including third-party organizations, to try to make that happen. This is the first floor plan. As you can see, or maybe not see, the, the area in the bottom is the entry that sort of faces out towards Sandwich Road. There'd be a small vestibule with a public toilet. The rest of the spaces of the building would be private spaces for fire department use. There's a small station officer watchroom, as well as reports area for firefighters on duty making reports and training. Then there's the, the main living areas of the building, kitchen dining day room, as well as individual dorm rooms. That's part of best practice in fire station design, to have an individual room. Those rooms are just big enough that in a storm event or an emergency, we can bring in a rolling cot and have extra personnel be able to stay there on a limited-term basis. The end of the space, there's a wellness room for the firefighters, health and safety. And then within the middle zone of the building, this sort of area right here, there are showers for the personnel for, for regular day use, but there's a zone right in the middle that I mentioned before, specifically designed for health and safety of firefighters. It's a decontamination process. With the apparatus space on the right, there's three of them. They would, firefighters would bring gear and their own clothing, wearing the bunker gear as they come through, decontaminating equipment in that first zone. In the second zone, they'd, or in the first one, they'd also be able to take off their outer bunker gear. Second zone would be lockers for clean clothing, and then they'd go through the third zone, which is decontamination showers, basically, you know, a steam shower or a shower that you can use to clean yourself up. That process mitigates the more particulate heavy areas, the spaces around the vehicles, from the clean part of the station, which is the living zone. So you don't have any of that particulate transferring out into the rest of the station. The mechanical systems have been discussed and selected by the fire department and the, sorry, the working group. They are intended to be, at this stage, a variable refrigerant system, not dissimilar to the units that are in this room on the ceiling. They would be refrigerant flow, it was an all-electric system, no fossil fuels, and would heat and cool the building, individual controls in all of the rooms, and be able to be very, very comfortable, but also be very super-efficient with the energy that we're making. So one of the most highly efficient systems, in my opinion. Most fire stations these days of this size would be designed using those, just because they end up becoming the most payback. We did do a life cycle cost analysis for this, and ultimately, that determined to be even the lowest first cost, as well as the lowest life cycle cost for the community.
Did you see, I'm sorry, was that air, air source heat pump?
Yeah, yeah, essentially.
Thank you.
We have a couple of renderings, one from the north side, looking back at the station. These are preliminary artist renderings. We don't yet have, you know, we're fairly early in design still. We don't yet have a final design look, but this is just sort of giving the flavor of what the building may look like. The materials, masonry around the apparatus room with some clavat type siding around the remainders of the building. Fire station doors have this special folding pattern for the door, and particularly the doors facing the street, we'd use that configuration. It looks a little bit more like older style fire station doors, less of the newer sectional type, with some arched openings with transom tops on top of. View from the nor, or the south, looking north, you again see those solar panels that we've kind of illustrated on the roof. That's, for the most part, south-facing. Again, just catching you back up, the, there's more for us to be attacking on this project as we continue to work in the design development phase. We'll be looking further into the site civil and utilities, working with the town planning and other staff to address that. We'll be looking at the building envelope materials and specifics, the landscape design, all of the engineering systems going into the building, finishing the code analysis, which we've already done a preliminary one of. And though it says complete schematic design, that's actually completed, we're in the design development phase right now. This is the project schedule. It's the complete, beginning of the project, all the way out to construction and to close out. You'll notice there's a break line because construction will take a little while. Currently, we're in the end of February here, putting together the project budget. The cost estimate has been completed, and we're in the, the beginning of the design development phase, looking towards town meeting. After that phase, we'd go through what's called construction documents, putting together bid documents for the project. We'd bid it out to public bid, and then we'd start approximately 13-month construction process. That is the end of my piece, and I'll let Steve get into the fun stuff.
Yeah.
Here.
Thank you.
Is it?
Nope. Up here at the top.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
How's that better?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Sorry for that little bit of a delay. Good evening. So as Jeff was saying, you know, we're, we're somewhat early in the design stage. We know we did space needs conceptual, and we're at schematic design. There are several steps to go, design development, construction documents, before we get 100% construction documents. But the intent was to get a cost estimate from third-party cost estimator in order to get an appropriation request for this upcoming town meeting. So what we've done here and what we're showing is essentially the, the total project budget broken into both hard costs and soft costs. And hard cost is essentially all costs relating to the construction itself, construction estimate. You know, we have a PV allowance and, you know, the various overhead and profits that would go to the general contractor. The soft costs are essentially your fees for your architects, engineers, your OPM, your testing, your testing costs, your furnitures, fixtures and equipment, the, some of the advertising and, and printing that, that we're going to have to do, some of the equipment that is going to be purchased that's not through the, the contractor themselves. And we've broken that, the estimate into both the hard costs and the soft costs. We've put contingencies on both the, the soft and hard costs. You can see down towards the bottom, we've got a 5% contingency on the soft costs. We have a, right now, we're carrying a 10% contingency on the construction. The construction contingency is essentially for anything that could be a latent condition that comes up. We, we, we've done some test pits. We think the soil is fine, but you never know if you're going to encounter ledge, something that you just don't know. So we have to have something in there to account for unknowns. And, you know, not, we're not showing it here, but essentially, we had come up with a, a number that would be requested for the, the town meeting at $10,800,000. What we did when we discussed it at the committee meeting, we determined that we would be able to do some value engineering, which we did incorporate in this estimate at the top, essentially right here, of a, a number of $625,000. That's, that's items that we know that we can value engineer out of, out of, out of the project. We, we started with a specific design. To give you an example, the design includes six bifolding overhead doors, which are more expensive than regular overhead doors. So that's something that we can, we can look at and maybe just cut it down to, to three of the, of the bifold and three of the overhead, having the, the nice bifolds at the front, which are a quicker opening, which increases the response time, and, and then make some savings on line items. And we've already started doing that, because if you look at, at this estimate, we're actually showing that we're at 9975 is what would be our ask at, at town meeting. The, the, the building committee voted to ask for an even $10 million for the appropriation. That does not include the $800,000 that was already appropriated, which we're working under now, which is really for, for the design. So we are, we are still looking at getting the overall estimate down in order to, you know, ultimately, we don't spend the money, then, you know, it just goes back to the town. But our, our request will be for $10 million under this, under this project for the, for the April town meeting.
You haven't value engineered out the solar panels, have you?
No, we, we have an allowance of, in for solar panels, yes.
Okay.
Yep. You see that's a...
And I think, right there. Ms. Mullen is...
I just want to add in, if you don't mind.
Yep.
There's just a couple of points that I just wanted to inform of the board. So we took this to, so at the building committee meeting, when we were talking about getting the cost down, I wanted to let you all know that within our, every year, I present a capital facility plan, and those are really our major capital projects that we issue debt for over two and a half, they're debt exclusions. But we have the debt drop-off in the graph that I usually show you all. So this $10 million can fit within the debt drop-off. And so that's why we wanted to value engineer that number down to $10 million. And it was presented to the finance committee. The finance committee did voter, vote in favor of this project, and, and they'll make the recommendation to town meeting for $10 million. We obviously wanted to update the board, give you the cost estimate. It was in your packet, you could take a look at it. But I wanted to let you know that the projects that we're looking at, and again, with the wastewater, we'll be able to fit that within our debt drop-off, so there won't be a tax levy increase. It's in our fiscal policy.
I know in years past, in our projected budget, I think we were carrying $8 million, but in the current climate, $10 million is reasonable expectation.
Yeah, we were always carrying $8 million. I mean, I've been carrying $8 million for probably, you know, five or six years, but we do have a significant debt drop-off coming off, coming in the next few years, that we'll be able to handle that. And also, you know, in the first couple, we have a borrowing authorization, so we'll be requesting a borrowing authorization from town meeting of $10 million. We'll take a two-thirds vote, and then it will go to the ballot in May. But keep in mind, I don't borrow the money unless we need it. So if we have a bid that's coming in very favorable, I'm not borrowing that whole $10 million. We just have that right now. We're very early in the design process. We're at schematic design level. So we feel very confident that we're value engineering some of the more costly items, looking at the cost closely. We can come in, you know, with this project at $10 million.
Can I ask a question just about, I know you're still sort of in, no, I, I was just traveling. I'm not going to take my mask off for all of you folks, so I'll keep you safe. But I was going to ask about the, the design, you know, that we just sort of, the schematic that we just saw. Can you just talk a little bit about what, how we came to that size of square footage? If there's anywhere, I mean, you know, certainly, I think you, you laid out the important components for safety and for well-being. I thought I saw, is it like six separate rooms? I'm just wondering about how we came to, just for the public to understand, how we came to the size component, because that's something that I've heard, you know, from a lot of residents concerned about, just how big does it need to be? Why is it a certain size? So if you could just speak to that.
Yeah, happy to. So the beginning of the planning for this station, as I said, started with the space needs. That space needs study started with the staffing and an equipment apparatus review. And so, working with the fire department, it was determined that they would have an ambulance and an engine company that would be at this station, and then there would be a third bay for the additional vehicles that the department owns, needs to locate somewhere in their stations. And considering the fact that this station's built for future capacity, would want to incorporate any future potential there. The ambulance and the ladder, or certainly, the ambulance and the engine company require four individuals to man those vehicles, so that would take out four of those bedrooms. Having the additional bay means that we should plan for the potential in the future to have capacity in the station living quarters to crew that additional bay, should there be a need for it in the future. That means that day one, there's not going to be six firefighters at this station, but the town has, has built the infrastructure so that you have that capacity in the future. You also have the capacity, you know, should you need it in an emergency, to house additional folks here. I can, we can certainly, you know, invite others to speak about specifically why an engine and an ambulance were needed here.
Oh, no, I just, I just more wanted to, to understand. I know when we did the senior center and we did sort of a space needs, you know, analysis of, of that space, you know, we thought about sort of programmatic use of that space, and so I just wanted to, and, you know, ensure that the building committee was kind of part of that, that exercise in coming down to sort of thinking about what needed to be there.
Yeah. And even before we were involved, that was, had been the plan, that there'd be an engine and an ambulance there, and that sort of just drives a lot of the decision-making. You know, there's some variables here that we potentially could change, but they're very small pieces of it, you know, how many lockers, how many exact square feet of storage. But I will tell you, the one thing that I've heard the most from departments that I've worked with is that they always should have built that little bit extra of storage or that little bit of extra of future capacity, because, you know, five, 10 years later, they're wishing they had it. And nobody ever builds in addition to a fire station. I mean, frankly, I'll tell you that point-blank. I've never seen a community tack on something 10 years after building a new station, you know, if you think about, oh, well, do we really need that extra bay? It's so much more expensive to build that bay 10 years later, five years later, where you're still paying the debt on the original building. I've never seen a community do it. So it's always best to do it now if you think you're going to need it.
But you probably have seen them at bedroom, living spaces.
At what they, what I've seen in the past is usually older stations where they've had to cobble out some bedrooms, particularly where they hadn't previously had a, you know, older stations that have just had one bunk room.
Right.
And now there's male and female. We want to have the flexibility. That's the other reason why you have individual bunk rooms. You have complete flexibility, no matter what happens over time, for, you know, who's at this station. Also, another reason why we have individual shower rooms in the station, completely cuts out any waste of having extra or not enough.
I just want to comment, I, I really think it's a very thoughtful design, and I appreciate your answering my questions as we went through the process of understanding, you know, the need for all of it.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, I might point out that this station is actually fairly centrally lo, all right, this station is fairly centrally located in West Falmouth. And should we ever have problems in one of our other stations? We have a little capacity here to move some of the equipment and personnel in here, so that we could still have them actively and not restrict their use because of some problem with some particular station. I mean, we just had problems with the West Falmouth station, you know, hot water, the boiler warmed down. Now, all of a sudden, it's off. So what do we do when it's cold in the wintertime with those firemen who are housed in that station? Well, you know, we've got a place here where we could comfortably put them and included equipment, so that we'd be right there, ready for them to respond. So I think the reserve capacity really makes sense from standpoint of looking at those, you know, what-if situations in the town.
Any other questions from board? Any questions from the public regarding the station? Yes, go ahead, please.
I just want to make one comment to address Megan with the role of the building committee. So the space needs, when they developed the space needs study, it was the architect and the project manager with members of the fire department. We didn't do a work study with the building committee. We couldn't have too many members on, on that, because they were meeting, you know, in the afternoon, and it was lengthy. That would have been an open meeting. We'd have to publicize it. So what we did was, we had a, so we had the department heads work with the architect and the engineer, but then the space needs study was presented to the building committee, and we went through what the needs were from the fire department, and then the building committee endorsed the space needs. But they didn't sit down with everybody.
Right, it was, okay, that's what I was asking.
I, that's, I know, that's what.
Because it was a different, we had specifically the working group.
Exact.
Okay.
We had a working group, and we couldn't have too many people on it, because then it became an open meeting where we're really trying to, you know, move things forward. But that's how it went. And then the building committee has endorsed, everything that we've brought to the selectmen and select, where we at right now, the building committee has endorsed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I just make one comment? Clarifying comment.
I think it would be appropriate just to clarify an item that architect Jeff Shaw raised at our public meeting regarding size of station. Jeff confirmed that the fundamental determinant of a size of a modern fire station is the primary equipment that's housed within it. And he's basically said that same thing, but I wanted to restate it. In this case, a, a rescue squad and a fire engine, and that has fundamentally... And that has fundamentally determined the overall square footage of this proposed station as it's laid out with the current building code and the health and safety standards that are presently applicable. So, I wanted to restate that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Suso. Any questions from the public before we let these folks go back to work, go back to home? Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Rosemary Carey from North Falmouth. Question for you on the... I am vaguely aware what value engineering refers to. And I noticed that there was a line for PV with that photovoltaic solar. Okay, so, does that mean that that would be one of the first items to go if the cost of the project is running too high?
Free question. Let me jump up there.
I'll just scroll back to the budget, because I think you're referring to a line on the budget here that may have implied something like that. So, what you're seeing here... I'm talking about Steve's budget. Do you mind? Here is the construction cost. The next line down is PV allowance. That is... Would be... Because we didn't estimate that with a construction cost estimator. We just carried an allowance for that. That is currently in the project. Then, all the value engineering items together would total the $625,000 that would be removed. So, the PV allowance would stay. So, that would not be part of the value engineering. And currently, if everything, you know, goes according to the plan, we would continue to build out the PV for the project. I think it's an important thing for the town. I'd like to see it stay.
Especially with the electric heating system, it really complements it well.
Yeah, I mean, that's the really intention of doing a fossil-fuel-free building, all-electric, is that you can support it with either PV on the building, ground-mounted, or other PV within the community that would offset that energy cost.
Do you think you've maximized the PV use on the building, do you think?
We've maximized all the roof area that we can get without changing the design radically to go to flat roofs or to a single slope that really faces south, which would have a much more modern appearance. And we did some studies with the building committee on flat-roofed buildings. It was a general impression that that was not the right direction, even if it was on part of the building for this location. So, we've opted to go with the pitched roofs, and that means you get about half the roof area. But it's a little bit better, because it's now angled. You know, it's just part of flat, sitting on the roof. So, we... As part of... Just sort of as a fact, it's very hard to have PV energy replace all of your electrical need for a public safety building. And the real important point is that these buildings are 24/7 facilities. They're being operated 24/7. So, whereas with a, you know, another building in town, maybe a library or something like that, there might be more roof area, and the building shuts down. And it's not being used for great portions of the day, so you're not using that energy. That is one of the reasons why PV doesn't currently have enough efficiency to cover the energy use of a public safety building. But we'd be offsetting as much as possible.
Right. Okay.
I just had one last quick question, maybe Jennifer. Is there any consideration or place in the budget? And I don't even know if it's going to be necessary, but for the abutters, I know, you know, it's not a particularly wide road. I know we're trying to set it back a bit. But just thinking about whether or not there's any mitigation, you know, thinking about plantings or things that may be necessary to sort of lessen that impact?
Yeah, there's been a lot of discussion about that at the building committee. They're looking at the type of lights, so then, you know, the lights are contained. When the apparatus comes out of the bay, they designed it in such a way it wouldn't be shining right directly across the street. So, there is definitely a lot of conversation regarding that. And we've had some abutters come to the public information session, and they were very supportive of the project. There was one in particular that was excited about it and had those similar questions, and it was acceptable.
Thank you. Last chance for questions from the public, if there are any? Okay, well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And I believe Chief Smith wants to speak to us about staffing briefly? Not necessarily briefly, but...
I'm sure he prefers that.
Doesn't have to be brief, as long as you like.
Brief is good.
Chief Smith, could I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Before you get started, just so it can sort of help to frame this conversation. One of the questions that I've been thinking about coming towards this meeting, and I did ask Mr. Suso, is in the long-range planning, are we prepared to man six stations fully unless or until a Northwest station is built? That's my first question. And this is similar, but does the current planning provide for the six stations to be fully operational, open and manned? They're similar. And then, the last question that I was just asked today was, is there anything in the plan moving forward that would ask that the Hatchville Station cover the West Falmouth area?
Okay. I have to keep that all...
I can ask you again any time.
That's fine.
You should have had those ahead of time. That's a tough one.
So, with the six-station model would put more stress on our staffing with the current numbers that we have. So, if we're still following the staffing model that we're proposing, that was presented in the fall, that would look at the new Hatchville Station with the combined Northwest. If we, as we're moving towards that goal, then, and we continue to try and staff all of our stations, then our numbers in the stations at a minimum would be two personnel, with the exception of the East Falmouth Station. So, we can continue to strive to keep those stations open. But if we don't have the numbers at the beginning of the day with our current manning levels, with the start of 14 at the beginning of the shift, then we may run into difficulties trying to man the stations throughout the day. If we had the numbers that, you know... That come along with the current staffing, and we didn't have any personnel out on that given day or incidences where we had personnel that are out injury leave, you know, or regular sick leave, military leave, or anything that would be affecting our manning, then, you know, we can have, you know, the regular staffing. But right now, that has been a challenge for us. So, in a roundabout way, we... If that's how we're going to continue to operate, then we will strive to do that. But it's going to be, you know... It's going to be difficult, but it won't... And it certainly can't be a guarantee on our part, because we will try and continue to, as we're doing right now with West Falmouth, is to utilize voluntary overtime to staff that station.
Better keep that "help wanted" sign out, huh?
That's fine.
Okay. I'm sorry. Thanks for taking those questions, but go ahead with what...
There was one, one last one.
The other one was, and I was just asked this today, at any time, was it part of the plan to have the Hatchville Station cover the West Falmouth part of town?
Well, it will, just like all the stations right now cover one another when everybody's out on calls. So, right now, the Hatchville Station, such as East Falmouth, North Falmouth, West Falmouth, Woods Hole, and Headquarters, all have their primary areas that they respond to, but they all cross over throughout the day, you know, when there's a multitude of calls. So, we do have simultaneous calls. So, if, per se, the north was busy, and that ambulance was tied up, and the Headquarters ambulance was tied up, then the Hatchville Station may be closer boundary-wise and may respond in the West Falmouth as well. But it could also respond in Woods Hole if we didn't have any coverage down there.
I guess, would West Falmouth be part of that primary coverage for Hatchville?
Well, no. I mean, if the state... If West Falmouth is staffed, then, no.
Okay. Thank you.
See, you have a nice report for us about current conditions. Is that what you wanted to share with us?
So, I provided that to give you an update. And I can, you know, without going into the whole thing, or if you'd like me to read it from front to back, you can, or we can just give a summarize. So, what we tried to, you know, bring everybody up to date on was where we are as of today. And as of today, we have no vacancies. We were able to fill our final two vacancies, and those personnel were vetted, went through the whole testing process. And as a result of the diligence of our staff to push them along, we were able to get them into the Academy three to four months earlier than expected. We had originally been told by the Department of Fire Services that we were looking at August to get these personnel in, but we were able to get them into May. The only caveat was they have to go to the Springfield Academy, which is a little bit of a distance, but we felt that it was important regardless of where the academy was. So, those two will be gone. All of our other recruits have completed the Fire Academy, and they're currently engaged in training at the station. And out of that, we continue to have them go through the orientation and experience side of our training to gather them through the qualifications in order to make them part of the shift strength. So, we, right now, had at least 10 recruits that were in that training process, and at least three within the last week have finished their qualifications. And we continue to see the others being closer to being made part of the shift complement as well and receiving their qualifications. Out of those seven, one is... Was activated in the military, and we don't expect him back until May. And he was very close to becoming shift strength. However, because of his activation in the military, he'll be back sometime in May. And when he comes back, we'll finish the qualifications. So, that continues to improve our staffing at the beginning of the day. And we can say that as of Saturday evening, we were able to actually, you know, since this whole hiring process, we actually had 16 personnel on duty that didn't require us to use overtime to staff the West Falmouth Station. And as... And today is the same way. The West Falmouth Station is staffed with regular staffing. Tomorrow, I haven't... I didn't look ahead, but our numbers are different on each shift because of injury on-duty leave personnel that make up that complement of personnel that are on paper, but not necessarily available for shift staffing. And that goes with personnel that are on non-duty-related injury leave. And as I stated, the one military, you know, member that is currently activated. So, with those seven and those five, there's 13 personnel that are unavailable to be part of shift staffing. And as we continue to see improvements in recovery for some of our personnel, then that'll obviously continue to bolster our daily staffing along with when these seven personnel are qualified. So, it's been a long time, you know, with all of the challenges, but it is improving. We are seeing less, you know, instances of overtime that we had seen previously. Our holdovers or forced overtime that we've had has been less. And in comparison from last year to this year, in this timeframe, it's much improved. So, we're still going to see these instances where we're going to have to utilize overtime currently to continue to staff the West Falmouth Station. But we hope that continues to, you know, minimize overtime. But again, with the staffing levels that we have, and when we're looking ahead, and if we're successful with Hatchville, which I'm very hopeful of, then, you know, we can continue to look at how our staffing is going to be, you know, reconciled, so to speak, and that we keep, continue to look for improvements in staffing. And as you know, the upcoming Town Meeting, we have three additional that are going to be... That have been, you know, placed in the budget. And hopefully, we'll get approval for that. And that'll be three more that'll be in our complement of personnel. And, you know, and my plan is, as soon as, you know, we get approval, then, as soon as that's available, then we will start the process with trying to hire for those positions as well. I think...
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. That was a great summary. Do you think, based on your current model, are you confident that by the time the new station is open and operational, that you will be able to hire enough firefighters to keep all of the stations operational?
I hope we can continue to generate interest in our department. It's, you know, utilizing civil service has been, you know, something that has, you know, has slowed us down a little bit. There was quite a bit of delays because of COVID and the availability, because the state, using civil service, it's a statewide process and a statewide listing. And moving forward, we may be able to change that, you know, with the prospect of coming out of civil service. We may be able to generate more interest in town. And I'm hopeful that that'll occur. I think that, you know, as departments go, we have a lot of respect. It's a busy department, and it's a challenge. And for people that want to, you know, personnel that want to come in to the department and, you know, and work in this profession, this is quite a unique place to work. Albeit, it's a, you know... You know, the cost of living's a little different down here, but still, the personnel that we have hired in recent months and in the last year so have gotten apartments or have moved in with one another or live within the 15-mile residency requirement. And they've made the transition.
I also want to thank you for this chart that you gave us. That's in our packet about the voluntary staffing at the station.
I just had a quick question. I just wanted to do just a quick math. So, at present, you have 74 line personnel.
We will, once those other two are hired, yes. I mean, are back...
Back and ready. But that doesn't include the three new that could get voted in. So, if that's successful, and I know it takes time to hire, but then, so, then we'd be up to somewhere around 77?
Correct.
Okay. Do you know what the highest number is that we've ever, in your experience, I mean, in your many years?
For staffing in the department? Actually, it continues to increase. You know, I was fortunate to pester Kim about it, because we went back and we looked at all of our position, and we did a tracking from 2004. And we've actually increased from 44 firefighters to 62 in that timeframe. So, it averages about 1.2 per year positions. But in that timeframe, there was obviously a lot of financial challenges for the town and constraints, and some, you know, there were approved positions that just weren't funded. And since that timeframe, and with the increased, you know, the two additional positions, the overrides that we were very fortunate to be provided, and with the additional three right now, and I will continue to, you know... I don't know, I want to use the word beg, but I will continue to ask for personnel. It's just, you know, it's... It's where we want to continue to, you know, to have the numbers and the safety for our personnel and to, you know, provide that service for the rest of the community.
Great. Thank you.
So, we're going to be meeting on Saturday to talk about policies, Select Board policies. We've got a dozen or so that need some work. And then, we're thinking about adopting a couple of new ones. And there was a suggestion made recently that maybe we should consider a Select Board policy with regard to hiring, you know, the number, the target number, so that the board can advocate for whatever it is that that number might be. And when I look at where we're at now, it seems to me that really, we need to be at 16 to start shift now. I know we're at 14, but we're getting close. And then, when we open the new Hatchville Station, if we want to keep the West Falmouth open in the interim, and if we're going to put four people in Hatchville, then I guess we really need to be at 20. And I guess then, the next question is, how many do we really want to target for start of shift if we want to realistically have 20? And I guess that means we need to kind of look at the history of attrition, and is there such a thing as an average number of people that might be out on injured reserve or something? Maybe some statistic that we can kind of come up with that we can use as a guideline for what our target might be? That's where I'm headed next, to try to get a picture so we can really get a budget in line that's really going to meet our goals.
Well, I mean, in my time in the department, it's... That's like a... It's a moving target if you're trying to find some type of a number. The average age when I fired... The average age when I came in the fire department was in the mid-forties and now we're probably in the upper twenties. I mean, we have a very young fire department now. So, you know, that certainly has changed and, you know, with, so I could say like within the last five years, we've had over, you know, the, there's thirty new personnel. So, I'm hoping that that doesn't change and we've been, and we haven't, we've had, we had one firefighter, as I noted here, that was, that unfortunately was graduated from the academy and he had already had his eyesight elsewhere and that, you know, was unfortunate because we put a lot of time and effort into that and we had to fill that. And thankfully, we had conducted the interviews and the, and the other individual had, had left early on and, and when I first came on. So, you know, so attrition through just injuries, I mean, we keep our fingers crossed that we're doing well and that everybody's operating in a safe manner and we're not gonna see anybody out, but it's, it's the nature of the beast. The job is, is, can be dangerous at times and we do have people that get injured. It's, it's tough to project retirements. It's tough to project if somebody's gonna leave. Every once in a while, there's a little bit of scuttlebutt that somebody might be leaving, but again, you know, we've been doing pretty good lately and right now, the numbers that we have expressed out of the five are the ones that we're looking at right now. So, I don't know if there's a way of, of looking at attrition without, you know, going through each of the years to try and see, but.
Even that's not guaranteed. It's just, we gotta maybe take our best guess at what, what we should plan for.
Yeah. I mean, well, I mean, right now, I know, you know, based on our, our benefits, we know that we can have up to four personnel or three personnel off each day or on vacation at the same time. It's, it's, so, right there, if, if it's a, if it's a, you know, a, a, a special holiday weekend or, or coming up on, on, you know, school vacation or something like that, we certainly could have at least four people per shift off.
Correct.
So, we know that number and that might require overtime to cover those, you know, those positions. So, those things happen. So, certainly looking forward in, in any of the staffing requests that we're making and if we're continuing to look down the road, having more personnel to continue to bolster or sustain, you know, the shifts are, are certainly something that we would want to, you know, you know, encourage and continue to work on to, to build up our shift strength.
So, if money and training and bodies, like available people, if, if you didn't have to worry about that, what would be your magic number, Tim, to run your department really, really well, given all of these issues that you're faced with? What's your magic number?
Well.
Just don't, don't think about it too much. Just give me a magic number.
Well, it all, it all depends on how many stations we're talking about and that's, that's one of the other problems with, we keep going back between five and six. So, you know, for sustainability right now, looking at the model that we, we, we provided in September or October when we gave that, when I asked, you know, said that what we would like to see for staffing is one officer and three firefighters at the east, the new Hatchville Station, the combined northwest, two in Woods Hole and six at headquarters, that gives us twenty. I would say sustainability wise, four additional per shift. So, you know, for us, that would be sixteen personnel right there.
What I have here.
Right.
That sounds realistic.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a couple of comments? I just wanted to refer to this graphic that Ms. Scott Price had, had mentioned that is included in your packet on staffing in the West Falmouth Fire Station. Okay. I think it would be timely to give the board the latest update on that. As the board is aware, the first two weeks in January, due to a mechanical equipment failure, that station was not operational and could not be staffed. But as shown in your graphic, the last two weeks of January, the night shift was staffed just under eighty percent of the time. So, nearly four shifts out of every five was fully staffed in West Falmouth for the night shift and for the day shift, sixty-seven percent. So, two out of every three day shifts and nearly four out of every five night shifts were fully staffed in West Falmouth as of the last two weeks in January. And I think that's reflective of the trend that Chief Smith and I and others had predicted in terms of increased staffing that has continued to climb. And I just wanted to note that for the record and it is something that has, has moved forward and will continue to be enhanced with the return of additional full-time staffing that Chief Smith has referred to as well. I just wanted to point that out. And also, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I think I'd be remiss if I did not note, just for the record, that through the extraordinary diligence of Chief Smith and his colleagues in the fire department, the used fire engine that town meeting had set aside funds to acquire has indeed been acquired and delivered and is going through some additional reviews and checkouts as it well it should on the part of the fire department. But the, I know there's not been a day go, go by since that, those funds were allocated that Chief Smith and his colleagues had not been working steadfastly to acquire that used fire engine and we're delighted and I, I want to acknowledge the chief and his staff, fellow staff members in the department for their tireless work. We frankly came up short on a couple of engines. We knew we had difficult circumstances, given the limitations on the size of the equipment that could be housed there, but they did hit the target and that used engine is now delivered here in Falmouth and will be going into service as needed in the near future, subject to the final checkouts that are underway. So, I, I do appreciate that and I just wanted to acknowledge it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I appreciate that too. And I really appreciate you being able to hire everybody that you were authorized to hire during this wacky environment with COVID, Tom.
Well, since August of, of 2020, we've hired nineteen, nineteen positions and that wasn't necessarily because of the, the override or the two additional. We, we did have some retirements, resignations and administrative, you know, you know, loss and so that's been something that, you know, has just been ongoing and, you know, frankly, it was, we were glad to, to continue to see some, you know, some fruit from the tree when we're doing that.
And then with all that success, at the same time, it's unforeseen, was it ten people down right now of, of your staff that's on hand?
Right. So, so we have at least five right now that are unavailable and then the other seven that are gonna be going through the qualifications. So, yeah, so, so as of, this morning, we had one individual that did get added to our shift strength. He finished his qualifications, so it was, the number was fourteen. So, that was a full shift that was, that was unavailable. So, we're, you know, we're plugging away, but, but I also did wanna just, you know, add to the, the chart that was referred to, you know, today being the last day of the, of the month, but on, you know, for, for West Falmouth, we did see at least thirteen out of twenty-eight days staffed during, during this particular month, whereas last year at this time, there were only four day shifts that were covered. We also covered twenty out of the twenty-eight night shifts, whereas last year at this time, there were only seventeen. So, we are seeing improvements. We are seeing, you know, the coverage there, you know, better in terms of having, you know, the personnel that are available and, and I appreciate the fact that we've still been able to continue to fund the overtime for that, for that particular challenge for us and we continue to do it and, and our shift commanders on a daily basis work to make sure that that's, you know, that's taken care of, so we're gonna have some coverage there.
We appreciate your efforts. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. We appreciate it.
Sure.
Thanks, Chief.
Yep.
And next we have wastewater related. Oh, I'm sorry, did you wanna speak? Certainly, oh, certainly.
How you doing? My name's Todd Taylor. I'm from West Falmouth and also a member of the Board of Directors of the West Falmouth Village Association. Just wanted to follow up on some of these numbers because there's a lot of numbers that have been given out tonight and I sent an email to the board in regards to the manning that we currently have in town at fourteen. I was curious on when they thought they might switch that number from fourteen to sixteen. I don't know if that's a question you can answer now or, or when do you think that's gonna be considered?
I certainly can't answer it. Did you wanna take a shot at that? I think, I think we just did as good a job as we can of answering it in the immediate.
The, the, the question still posed to you guys is that we're still a volunteer fire department in West Falmouth. They staff it when they can and on voluntary basis and it's the only, it's the only station in town that does that. And, and we're almost at a point now where we thought we were gonna be in good shape by March or April with all the staffing and if that was the case, then that would not be, we'll be no longer voluntary. It would be stationed on a full-time basis. And in order to do that, you have to go to sixteen. And we, we've had many meetings here, as you all know, about this whole issue and we seem to have support for the Board of Selecting to, I think, carry six fire stations. We're gonna need a lot more firefighters to be hired in order to do that. And I think the chief was right. I mean, you're gonna need twenty-four man shifts. That's ninety-six firefighters.
Mm-hmm, a big task.
That's a lot, a lot of firefighters. But in the interim, we have five. We can't staff five now. We, we only staff four.
We're getting close though and we're gonna talk about it on Saturday, I think, and we're gonna have a discussion of whether or not we can address a more clear policy from the board that will set some goals at least and some dates that we hope for. I'm not sure exactly what we'll come up with.
Yeah.
But that's gonna be our first, next attempt at addressing it.
So, is, is there a timetable that we can go from fourteen to sixteen or is that, I know we talked about that being negotiated?
I think we're gonna talk about it on Saturday and see how far we can go with a policy and that'll be our first effort and then we'll revisit if that's not something that we feel is gonna be effective.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just heard the fire chief say that the last several shifts in West Falmouth were able to be staffed without the need for voluntary overtime.
Yes, sir.
I rest my case.
So, we are getting there.
So, that trend is advancing.
This town accepts five full-time fire stations, not part-time.
Pardon me, pardon me, sir.
I've been up there many times.
Mr. Chairman, if you want, that gentleman to be at the podium.
It's our request, but I have no intention of debating him. No, we don't want to debate.
I think this town, I think this town can afford to operate five full-time fire stations. Not on a volunteer basis and we appreciate the guys volunteering and, and the new guys that are staffing the sixteen, but that's not twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. That's periodically.
But I want you to take note of that what Mr. Suso did say was accurate, that we are starting to.
And we appreciate, we appreciate that.
We are starting to staff it with regular duty, not the overtime, but I appreciate your point as well.
Yeah, and we appreciate you getting a spare fire engine. That was, that was, we waited a long time for that, but we appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Like finding a needle in a haystack.
Yeah, it was easy.
Yes, Mr. Shearer.
Oh, Dan Shearer, again, West Falmouth. I've been here a long time. That station's been here a long time. I've had one heart attack. I can't schedule my neck, or my next one to see if, if the station's occupied or not. I would, personally, I'd prefer not having that station than having it the way it's been. And you say you've been at nights in February, you've got eighty percent of the time, with eight times sixty-seven. What are you gonna have in August when people enjoy the weather? I mean, nobody minds now you got a television set there, you can go up and be just like home, but when August comes, that's not gonna work. You're not gonna get what these people. We need to go to sixteen. We need to do it now. And if you really think that you're gonna get this override, there's gonna be a lot of people that are gonna fight it if we don't have a guarantee that we're gonna have North Falmouth and West Falmouth stations opened until we have a Northwest station that'll be opened. That's, it, it, it just isn't fair. It's wrong. You selectmen are, one of your main jobs is to see that there's health and welfare in this town. And by going part-time in one station, that's not doing it. And the rest, this all rests with you five. It's your decision what you wanna do for the town. And I think you're being very neglecting in your job. The, the other question I have is, this new station is gonna cost ten million dollars we have that we can fit into a budget, which is fine, and, but it'll probably cost a little bit more. But where are you gonna get the engine and the ambulance? That's not free. We don't have one. Is that gonna be another override? Why don't we do it all at once? But that, another engine and an ambulance is what?
Another million bucks?
Half a million bucks, a million bucks, a million and a half. Do it now. Tell us the truth. We in West Falmouth would sit there wondering what the truth is. We hear different stories, we hear different things, we hear part-time. I thought that we would have to, well, we got these hires, we were gonna have a full-time station. That was our understanding. That's what the override was gonna do for us. And now we're going into a part-time station, maybe.
Well, we're gonna have some more clear answers for you very soon, Mr. Shearer.
Well, you know, you've had two years.
We've made some pretty good progress in those two years, but we're not quite there.
Okay. Well.
Try to do better.
I have a quick question. Would the purchase of a, a new ambulance or a new truck, would that be in the capital plan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I clarify the very policy that this board is being asked to adopt? You adopted last November. It's on the website. It was presented to you in November and the board adopted it unanimously. So, you already have that policy in place and we can certainly continue to restate it, but that involves the fact that the West Falmouth Station will continue to be operated until such time as a replacement Northwest Station is open and operational. You adopted that last November. So, what is being asked, you have already embraced. I just wanted to clarify that to be fair to the board.
Correct. And the next policy that we're gonna discuss will be like a, a more broad, longer-term staffing plan policy. So, it'll be maybe a little more in-depth. That's my hope. Is there any more questions or comments from the board or the public? Okay, very well. We're gonna move on to the next subject, which is presentation on wastewater-related town meeting articles. Welcome, Ms. Lowell. Hello.
New subject. There are six. I'm Amy Lowell, I'm the Town's Wastewater Superintendent. There are six articles that are related to wastewater on this coming April town meeting agenda and they are all appropriations. So, the Finance Committee will be making the recommendations on them, but I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the boards to make sure that the board is, you know, as familiar as possible with these ahead of time and that we have a, have a bit of a head start into the meeting, into town meeting. Article fourteen is funding wastewater treatment facility improvements. This is a big funding article. This is a twenty-four million dollar funding request and the scope of it, well, let me talk a bit about background first. The operations building on the site was constructed as part of the original construction in nineteen eighty-five and that building has not been upgraded since. And that building has not been upgraded since. The treatment facilities were constructed from two thousand three to two thousand five. So those are fifteen to seventeen years old. And the building, the operations building, is thirty-seven years old. A wastewater treatment facility evaluation was completed. And the improved, that, the recommendation of that, or the finding of that evaluation was that improvements are definitely required to the wastewater plant to accommodate the flows from the next planning area that the town is planning to sewer, which is the T-Ticket Acapescot area around Great Pond, as well as to accommodate new flow from the existing sewer service areas, redevelopment within Main Street, Davis Straits, T-Ticket Highway, while continuing to meet the groundwater discharge permit for the wastewater treatment facility. Because of the scale of this project, the town went out with a request for qualifications for an owner's project manager for the, for this, the wastewater improvements project. And Weston and Sampson was selected. We also did a request for qualifications for the engineer for this project, and GHD was selected. The scope of the project, to summarize, I have a few slides that summarize the scope. The first big item is to add a third sequencing batch reactor. Right now, we have two at the plant, and that is the main treatment process at the plant. And having a third reactor will allow us not only to treat additional flow and load, but also to have more operational flexibility among those three. We also will be replacing the sludge thickening system. The sludge thickening system was installed as part of that two thousand three to two thousand five project and is beyond its useful life. It's really time to upgrade that technology. And that will require some modifications to the sludge processing building in order to accommodate that. Also, we will be modernizing the operations building. This is, the photograph here is of the building that was constructed in nineteen eighty-five. We had an architect and a structural engineer review this building in detail. The core of this building is in good shape. And the, and the things like the hallways and the stairwells are all, they all meet current accessibility requirements. So the building itself, we did look at whether it made more sense to tear it down or to expand within the existing footprint. We determined that it made sense to use the existing structure, but there are a number of improvements needed. For example, all the windows need to be replaced. We've been talking about that for a good ten, fifteen years. The, as you can see in this photograph, the exterior, the masonry, the, excuse me, the exterior needs to be replaced, needs a new roof. There will also be some modifications within the building. The photograph on the left is the electrical room in the building. And I don't know if you can see, but the, there are lockout-tagout tags on most of the motor control cabinets in that room because much of the original equipment is no longer in use and powered from that building. So we can remove the electrical from that room and make better use, consolidate all the relevant electrical into the basement and make use of that existing room for other purposes. Finally, we'll be constructing additional influent and sludge storage capacity. That means several more tanks on the site and replacing the ultraviolet disinfection system. The last step of the treatment process is disinfection, which we do with UV light, not with chlorine. And that equipment, as well as beyond its useful life and really needs replacement. The cost of this project, I had said already, it's a twenty-four million dollar project. I've broken it down into those same major groups. It does include a twenty-five percent contingency, which is appropriate at this point in the project. We have a good idea of the, of the building blocks and the basic design of this, but we, we're more than a year, we're a year from going out to bid for it. I did have, I asked GHD and Weston and Sampson to take a look at what GHD was reviewing, but GHD to take a step back and look at the scope of this project and the cost and the inflation and inflationary circumstances that we've had over the last couple of years and reevaluate the cost and project it forward to the midpoint of construction. So this twenty-four million dollar number not only reflects the cost escalation that's occurred over the last couple of years, but also forecasting to the midpoint of construction, which is June of two thousand twenty-four. This project qualifies for a zero percent interest state revolving fund loan, an SRF loan, like the last other wastewater projects we've completed. There will be a minimum of a three-point-three percent loan forgiveness on that loan. And the project is already on the state's list. We put it, we applied to be on the list last August. So when the state released their list of projects to be funded in this, in this coming year, this project was on that list. The great news is that this project will also get a twenty-five percent grant from the Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund, which we still need to appropriate the entire cost of the project. But ultimately, this reduces the cost of the project to the town by twenty-five percent. As Jennifer mentioned early on, this project can be funded without increasing the tax rate, so it's taking place of retiring debt. A brief schedule overview will be designing, this will be designed over the next year. We will complete the process to apply for the SRF loan in October of this year. And we'd issue the bid package in about this time next year. And then the construction would take up to two years from around, from June two thousand twenty-three to June two thousand twenty-five. That's my summary of Article fourteen. The next wastewater article on the town meeting warrant is a, an article to fund evaluation of ocean outfall options for discharge from the, from the, for treated effluent from the treatment plant. The town has spent a lot of effort over the years evaluating land-based discharge sites. And that is what we plan to use as part of, as the recharge area for our next searing sewer system expansion. But as we've reviewed land-based sites over time, it's become more and more clear that it's very difficult to meet the load limits for all of our coastal ponds while discharging treated wastewater on land. So it has, the Water Quality Management Committee has begun to review seriously the concept of an ocean outfall for future treated wastewater discharge. Not for this next project that we're talking about, not for the T-Ticket Acapescot project, but beyond that. One of the main obstacles to, or one of the challenges to even considering that at this point is the uncertainty on the cost. So the Water Quality Management Committee, with the support of the Department of Public Works, is requesting ninety-five thousand dollars from the April town meeting to do some additional work to, to refine the cost, to collect additional information that will help refine the outfall cost estimate.
Could I ask you one question?
Yes.
You referred to the next imminent project as the Acapescot project, but that's a little confusing to me because I would think you would call it the Shorewood project or the Great Bay project. It doesn't really include Acapescot, does it?
So it's, it's called the T-Ticket Acapescot Project. And it's, and it's, you are correct that it is divided into two phases. So the part that we are moving forward with first is the T-Ticket Path portion, the T-Ticket Path Peninsula, to follow, be followed as soon as the town is able with the Acapescot portion of it. They've been treated as the same because they're both watershed to Great Pond and because the infrastructure is being planned together. So the recharge planning and the wastewater treatment facility upgrade and the lift station siding and all that is being planned in coordination for that sewer.
I see. Okay. But the actual Acapescot implementation is still a few years off.
It is a few years out, yes. Articles eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-one are all proposed underground sewer easements. So these are easements for pipe and manholes that would be underground. And the goal of this set of four easements is to reduce, to increase the number of properties within the T-Ticket Path Peninsula that can be served by gravity sewers. So there will still need to be properties served by grinder pumps in this area, but this, this reduces that number and increases the number that can be served by gravity. So this is a set of four easements that basically helps collect wastewater from the St. Mark's Drive area, Estrella and Seabrook area, and through Village Common Drive over to a lift station site on the town-owned Augusta property. And the cost of those four easements, as, as offered in the purchase and sale agreements provided to the property owners, is eighty thousand dollars, eighty, we'll call it eighty thousand dollars.
It seems like a steal after twenty-four million. That's like a real bargain.
They're, you know, they're underground easements. So once, once it's underground, it does not materially or significantly affect the ability of the property owners to build on their properties. The last thing is just a, an acknowledgement that there will be future town meeting articles related to wastewater in the next couple of years. There will be additional easements that are needed. There's a Falmouth Port lift station site. And for Acapescot, which, as you pointed out, is Phase Two of the T-Ticket Acapescot Sewer Project, there will be additional easements needed there. We are planning to request the sixty million, approximately, dollar appropriation for the T-Ticket Acapescot Collection System and Recharge Area in April of two thousand twenty-four.
If my former neighbors on Shorewood Drive ask me, when's the sewer coming? What should I tell them?
So I would say it'll, it would be at least seven years, a minimum of seven years before sewer would be available there and likely more.
On Shorewood or Acapescot?
You're, so Shorewood.
That's the one that's right on Great Pond in the yellow.
Well, so all of that's yellow, but Shorewood is on the Acapescot Peninsula. Right.
Well, I don't know.
Yes, I mean, if, so I believe this is.
Shorewood Drive is a peninsula on its own.
Whoops. This is Shorewood Drive, right?
Right.
Yep, so that's part of the Acapescot Peninsula.
But the Acapescot Peninsula is actually the next one over.
Nope. No, this is, this is, you can see my cursor, right?
Blue Road is Shorewood.
Right, so this is the, what I've been referring to as Phase One, is this whole area here. And this is what I'm calling the T-Ticket Path Peninsula.
Okay.
So that's happening next, along with this portion of Maravista that was not sewered in the last sewer project.
So even though Shorewood Drive is shaded, it's not included in Phase One?
So this is all, this is all Phase Two.
Oh.
See the two?
Well, then the Acapescot name really doesn't make sense.
So this is called by many people, but apparently, not by everybody, is, it's, I have heard this referred to generally as the Acapescot Peninsula.
What's the next one, then?
Um, Davis, Davis, right?
So that's Acapescot Road on the next, your cursor's on Acapescot.
No, so this is Acapescot Road here.
Right here.
This is Acapescot Road.
And then there's the bridge that goes over.
Okay, I'm sorry, excuse me.
So Acapescot Road is on the other side of the same peninsula.
All right.
So we're searing around Perch Pond.
Just glad it gets home every night, I guess.
Okay.
It's a weird view.
Yeah.
Right, so this is basically around this northeastern Maravista and the T-Ticket Path Peninsula I'm calling it. Does that make sense to people, the T-Ticket Path Peninsula? That's the first phase. And then over here would be the next phase, though.
All right.
From Shorewood Drive, Acapescot, and everything in between.
Thank you.
No problem.
I actually have a question.
Yes, please, go ahead.
I was at the meeting at the library when they discussed the outfall pipe, and I personally think it's best. But I was reading all the notes and minutes from the last MWRA meeting, and it was relative to the water, the wells, the numerous or multiple wells they use in Worcester. And they were having a problem with contamination from the turnpike or whatever. And they were closing off several wells, and they were seeking permission to use wells from different areas to feed most, basically, parts of Auburn. But the NWRA was very particular in, if water was taken from a well field, they were quite strict in ensuring that it was put back into that aquifer so it wouldn't come up short or whatever. Now, is this outfall, outfall pipe going to draw any scrutiny from them and contribute to potential droughts or loss of well water or whatever? Because we're going to be taking all this water, whatever, three million gallons a day, and dumping it out into the ocean, obviously. So is it going to be affecting the water table in these areas? And do you think that that's going to turn out to be a problem later on? I mean, I read, though, it was, it was quite interesting. It was very boring, but it was still interesting enough. I'm curious.
So it's a very good question, and it does come up regularly about outfalls. And the answer is, on Cape Cod, the answer is no. That that is not something we have to worry about on Cape Cod because the groundwater flow is so significant here. We have, we have, we have the sandy soil and a rapid groundwater replenishment. The way, so I have heard this question and this response, you know, regularly throughout the wastewater planning process. And as we, as we handle our water and our wastewater now, the water is extracted, our drinking water and the water that comes out of all the spigots in town comes from a few sources in town. And then it is discharged in various places all over town. The, there is not a, there is a, we're not putting water back where we get it right now. And the outfall, this is not, I think, going to be something that the state is concerned with about an outfall concept. There will be plenty of other hurdles. I don't think that's going to be one of the big ones.
Yeah, I asked, I asked John Waterbury, who's been on the wastewater management committee for twenty years, something like that. And he is a scientist, he's been looking at this very carefully, about that same question. And he said, if you take a look at Joint Base Cape Cod as part of our recharge area, we have such an enormous recharge area to collect rainwater that feeds into our relatively porous soils, the sand and older-type soils, so that we really aren't faced with that challenge of how you replace the water that gets bypassed from the groundwater by taking it out through an outfall into, you know, Vineyard Sound or Buzzard's Bay.
It is.
So that was his response, and he had looked at it fairly carefully. So it's a good question, but I, but we, if you think about where all of our freshwater comes from, it's a collection from over a very large surface area. And we're looking at diverting a relatively small portion of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
How does that jive with water restrictions that we have semi-frequently?
That's different.
Yeah, it's, so the water restrictions are related to our supply from the water sources. And when we talk about the issue of putting water back from the place where it came, the groundwater resource is the entire Sagamore lens, right? And, and that's a very different question from the limits on our own resources. So we have the Long Pond plant, the Long Pond, the Long Pond plant, and then each of the individual wells. And that's our supply, our water supply, the amount of water we can draw in a day is not based on the supply of the. can draw in a day is not based on the supply of the Sagamore lens, it's based on the supply from each of our individual extraction locations.
And just one more comment, I guess it's not really a question, but I understand that our T-Ticket searing area is going to be managed by using expanded capacity at the existing treatment facility, correct?
We-
Is it still on track?
So, that Article fourteen is to upgrade the existing wastewater plant. A large part of that is really work that needs to be done because of the age of certain pieces of equipment, but some of it is to accommodate the additional flow, and in particular, the higher load, nitrogen load, organic load, that we need to accommodate with this new service area. So yes, the plan is to take the flow, we, as part of the planning that we've been doing for wastewater in Falmouth, we're not talking about building any other wastewater plants. We're talking about bringing wastewater from any new area to our existing plant and treating it there. Our challenge has been, where do you discharge it after you've treated it?
Well, my point is that we've already got the additional infiltration beds planned on-site, so that the planning for the outfall only has to come into play for Phase Two and beyond, correct?
Right, we, the project that we propose in April of 2024 will include recharge, land-based recharge for the flow from the T-Ticket Acapescot area.
So it gives us enough time to continue the outfall for a future project.
Exactly.
Any other questions from the board or the public? Yes?
Hi. Good evening. Eleanor Ling from Precinct One. I have a quick question.
Eleanor, can you drop your mask so people can see your pronunciation?
Oh, sorry. Sorry. I have a quick question regarding funding. Do you think that any of these projects are eligible for the Biden Administration Infrastructure Bill funding?
So, I'm not the Finance Director, and I don't believe she's here right now, but we, the design of this project is being funded primarily with ARPA funds that the town has already received. And I do believe and hope that this project will be available for additional support from that funding when it comes. I also think that these next phases are even more likely to be lined up to take advantage of that funding.
Thank you.
That sounds good. Any other questions or comments from anyone? Very good, thanks. Our next item on the list is vote article recommendations for April 2022 Town Meeting, but I'd like to postpone that till we've had the other folks that are here waiting discuss the other items. Is there anyone that has objection to postponing that to the end of this section of the business content?
No, I don't.
All right, very well. We're going to carry on next. We'll be discussing a report from the Edward Marks Building Advisory Committee.
Do you need the easel, Charlie?
No, I'm just going to park it.
Okay.
For your viewing pleasure.
Well, let me get the easel.
You need the easel.
Because we can't see it at the least up on the level.
Oh, that's right, you've got the rise there. Let me just get some other things out, if I may. I brought you a hard copy of the slides.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And...
Thank you.
I'm not sure why this is so mysterious. Where's the D drive?
Oh, yeah.
I'm really not interested in blowing anything up. Ah, okay, that's what I chose, so we're good, I guess. Then I got to worry about. Here we go. We'll skip the JPEGs of our grandkids for you. Okay, thank you for your patience. This is a prop. I'm planning to go through the entire thing, page by page, with you. Good evening, I'm Barbara Wayand, I'm the Chair of the Edward Marks Junior Building Advisory Committee. And the last time we presented any update was what we will now call pre-COVID. So it's been quite a while since I've spoken to you last, and I wanted as promptly and swiftly as possible to go through what we've been working on since we spoke to you last. So we have a year and a bit to cover. I have parts of my mask in my mouth, it's so attractive. So what I'm going to do this evening is go over these points. I obviously invite questions as you wish, and at whatever speed you wish. This is really annoying. Okay. So this, this is just basically sort of our agenda as we see it right now. Let me just skip, if I may. I'm going to call, I'm calling this, I wish I had a touchscreen, pertinent background. This is not what I call the history of the typewriter. This, we're going to start a little more recently, but I just wanted, especially since you have a wide television audience that covers the Select Board meetings, I want them to understand how we came to be. And that happened in 2019. The Select Board asked for an advisory committee to work with plans for, particularly for the town's use of the first floor of the poorhouse building, which is now known as the Edward Marks Junior Building. We are incredibly lucky in terms of our makeup. We have a couple of people who are pretty proficient in historical preservation, but in addition to this, because a lot of what we're looking at now relates to construction, we have three well-known contract, general contractors on our committee, which gives us tremendous proficiency, I feel, in terms of our cost estimating. Of course, everything has to go through the town, but just the way we're grappling with cost issues, I find very, very proficient. Excuse me, I suffer from dry mouth, so. Okay, so, we met for almost a year and a half every two weeks, which is way above and beyond what volunteer organizations do, but we, it's a pretty complex building and a potential set of things that we can do with the building. So when zooming came in, we zoomed, and now we're back to a more, you know, functional meeting schedule, I guess I'd call it. We've met with the Planning Department and with town managers on a pretty frequent basis. I feel as though they know what we're doing and we know what they're doing, so that's been, that's been pretty, pretty good overall. The thing I want, would like everybody in this audience and in your television audience to know is, this is an historically significant building. It's not glamorous, it's not highfield. In fact, it's the very, the opposite end of the economic, you know, equilibrium, that highfield, the BBs, and at the bottom you have the historic, the historical poorhouse, which served what they called the poor, and amassed, starting in 1813. And that encompassed, when we say poor, that could be anything from a widow of a sailor who went to sea and never came back. It could be somebody, I hate to say this, but with trade came drunkenness, so there were a lot of alcoholics who were suddenly roaming streets, physically disabled people, mentally challenged people. All of this became called poor, is, I guess, the euphemism of the time. And in colonial times, the colony of Massachusetts was charged with providing care for the poor. So every town had its poorhouse. Now, what has happened subsequently, though, is that poorhouses, obviously, because they are, tend to be at least 150 years old, have burned down, have been moved, have been dismantled, or gone into private ownership. So what we have here is the only extant poorhouse on the Cape, which is still owned by a municipality, and thus has escaped a lot of the fates that I've just described, but it has been neglected since the Artists Guild moved out. So I want you to consider that the reason that there is a state-owned preservation restriction on both the interior and the exterior has nothing to do with glamour, in the sense that highfield has, but what it has is a rich social history that it represents of 150 years of care of the poor. Plus, as a colonial building, the construction is surprisingly extant in terms of how it was constructed. It is a marvel in that regard. So during, where did that charming little, oh, it's my cursor sitting there, excuse me while I vacate. We worked on the HVAC system. The town advised us that the move of the town onto the first floor of the Human Services Department could not happen without a contemporary HVAC system. So we worked with both the Town Hall and with ESCO, which is the fund provider for making municipal buildings more energy-efficient, to find what I'm calling here a preservation-sensitive solution for heating and cooling of the first floor. That building was not, as you can imagine, amenable to suddenly having pieces pop in. And with respect to the occupancy plan, we've tried to be very careful about identifying what's original, what came later. This is a building that has evolved over 150 years, so you don't get to go back to 150 years and find this pristine representative of the building of that era. So there are questions of, okay, so if that's, if that's true, then what do we need to keep to ensure the authentic character of this building? What we did in 2021 was to write a proposal to the Falmouth CPC to underwrite what is called an Historic Structure Report. And this is a very well-known, well-understood document that's in the list, if you want to go look for it, under the Secretary of the Interior, there is a document called Historic Structure Report. And essentially, it's a condition report, an analysis of the structure as a whole, building by building, inside and outside, hence this tome, which I'll get to in a moment, and read you every page. And so we wrote that proposal for, to get this report done by professional preservation, conservation company. And we also wrote another proposal to happen that's coming up. I'll show you. I'm going to make this app, I promise it'll be clear, but the funding cycles are very difficult to explain in prose, so I made a little chart. So in addition to our receiving monies, or having them accepted at town meeting, to get this report prepared, in addition to that, we started the proposal process for what I'm calling exterior one, okay? Because we think there are probably at least three of these to come. So far this year, in the last two months, we've just finished reviewing a feature I call proposed final. That's when somebody says, we think we have it, take a look at it. Well, I want to assure you that all of these little tabs, most of them are really nits, you know? This, we really liked working with Boston Conservation Associates. They are incredibly knowledgeable, they've done other work for the town, for example, at the Falmouth Historical Society is an example. And the writing is very clear, very articulate, and the only reason this is this thick, I will now confess, is because it's single-page, it's, but you'll get the double-page version, much smaller. So that's what we did predominantly in, in last year. We had to go through five, my recollection is, it was eight candidates that applied, firms that applied to do this for us. We narrowed it immediately to five, and then reviewed all the five, the strengths and the weaknesses, and BCA, as we're hyphenating it, or reducing it, is, was our unanimous choice, and they did a very, very good job. Now, we're going, we're getting ready, I mentioned to you that we got ready exterior number one for the CPC, and I'll explain next what is involved in that. What we also are doing, though, is we're sending a very similar proposal to Mass Historical Commission, so that they can match funds with CPC, take the weight off our local, demonstrate interest of the state in this, this building and its preservation. So one of the reasons I'm here tonight is because we're now up against the wall. I need to have your formal permission to submit a proposal to the MHC, and I'm just going to show you what that involves. It's so simple. So this is what we sent, this is one slide on what we sent to the CPC and what we're proposing to do with the MHC. So there are three areas of sort of immediate concern, which we would like to get done before the move, if possible, because there's public safety issues or infrastructure issues. So when I say the portico, I'm referring to the whole framework around the front door. And then the foundation has some holes in what is called parjing, which is, you know, the loss of, of foundation. And then the bulkhead, we need to replace the bulkhead, which is rotting, including the area, and inside, if we ever had a workman go down into the cellar, you would hear the workman screaming because the stairs are rotting. So there's an inside-outside component to that, but we need to take care of these things. And that's the MHC document, which we are close to finalizing, I mean, within days, is the same as what we've asked the CPC for. And the CPC has approved it to be sent to town meeting for spring of this year. So that's where we are with CPC. I think I want to go, if you don't mind, I'm going to flick ahead. I wasn't sure when this would be best, but what's taking so long is that we have only two exterior funding sources for funding of this building because it's municipally owned. If it were owned or leased, long leased by a nonprofit organization, we could send out a lot of funding requests to various foundations. However, because it's municipally owned, Mass Historical and CPC are two, I'm calling them exterior, when I say, are Falmouth CPC. And so what you can see here, I hope, is how you go from one thing and wait for the money, and then there's a lag even once the money is approved before you get it in and can spend it. And in the case of MHC, we won't see any money until the project is finished, and then they do a reimbursement. So that's the awkwardness of what we're living with, and it's the reason- And the CPC has approved it to be sent to town meeting for spring of this year. So that's where we are with CPC. I think I want to go -- if you don't mind, I'm going to flick ahead. I wasn't sure when this would be best, but what's taking so long is that we have only two exterior funding sources for funding of this building because it's municipally owned. If it were owned or leased, long leased by a nonprofit organization, we could send out a lot of funding requests to various foundations. However, because it's municipally owned, Mass Historical and CPC are our two, I'm calling them exterior when I say, are Falmouth CTC. And so what you can see here, I hope, is how you go from one thing and wait for the money, and then there's a lag even once the money is approved before you get it in and can spend it. And in the case of MHC, we won't see any money until the project is finished, and then they do a reimbursement. So that's the awkwardness of what we're living with, and it's the reason why things are taking so long to move forward. But we feel as though we're in push-off now with Exterior Number One, to go back to that. So this is, in a nutshell, Exterior Proposal Number One. And then what we're getting to -- whoops, excuse me, I went forward, not back. So in the near term, we're going to produce that proposal for MHC. And then what we're hoping is the town has signed on with a new architect for the construction phase. They seem -- Peter was kind enough to share the RFQ to which they responded, and it looks like an incredibly capable firm. They have experience both with municipal buildings and with historical buildings. So we have a lot of confidence in that. And we would like to provide input because now we have a new player on the scene. We want to make sure that our voice continues to be heard there. And then they go from the construction plan to the actual construction. So that's something, again, we just want to be watching and able to give input to. And then one of our members came up with the idea of the use of volunteers. And I want to ask Mike Duffany to speak to that point because you all know Mike, number one, and number two, he's, I'm proud to say, is one of our committee members.
Thank you, Barbara. Michael Duffany, a member of this committee, and it's a very worthwhile project. I'm just here just to quickly describe something that we're going to request some indulgence on the board's behalf, and that's a couple of the elements of the exterior trim, that we just feel that we can't, we cannot duplicate it with the procurement process that we're held to if we put this out as a municipal bid. We're not going to be able to get the duplication, if you will, of the gutter line on the front of the building where it matches into the crown moldings coming down the rakes. They do not make gutters today that match those. We've had this frustration for years. That said, one of our committee members, Tom Renshaw and some of his colleagues, have actually produced moldings that we can use to do the very front of this building, which now has a element of gutters, and the portico, okay? And so that said, what we'd like to do is the Friends of the Ed Marks Poorhouse, however we're going to word that, would like to be able to donate, if you will, the materials and the labor to reproduce this the way that it was back when it was done originally, 100-plus years ago, you know, that will really make this building really stand out as, you know, in the era that it represents. And so, at no cost to the town, and, you know, we have a very detailed plan to make those parts, install only those parts for the gutter work, on the portico and on the main roof, and then we'd like to shore up, if you will, the foundation of the portico and then reestablish the columns so that the front of this building will be as close to what it was back in the day as you can get it. And again, with all respect to a lot of the artisans and trade, myself being one of them, you're not going to get this on a price point basis. You're really not. You're going to get it through such a donation, if you will, of this kind of in-kind for the town. And I know that there's questions about liability and insurance and all that, but we have addressed those amongst ourselves. I have spoken to Frank Duffy, our previous town council, about this, and how do you, how can you, how can we find a way to restore this, okay, to what it really wants to be? And it's very difficult to do, other than the way that we are suggesting. So I just thank you for, Barbara, letting me just try to reassure you that this is going to be done. And I'll go into length if you want to about the parts and so forth, but it's really, it's really pretty genius, to be frank about it, so.
Mike, how does the portico work tie in with what we're looking at on the submission for the CPC, then, if it's a volunteer effort?
So the only piece that we're looking to do on that is that gutter, just to bring the three sides of the gutter work around and the two columns. The rebuilding of the portico itself, the deck and so forth, the ceiling, the roof, you know, the roof is, there's going to be some expense involved there in the type of roof that it's going to be.
So that type of, that part of the work will be a bid package?
That part will all be a bid package. When they come, this other work will have been completed. You won't see the square posts that are there, you know, it'll be back to what it was back in the day. And the same with the gutter line across the eve at the front of the building. That will be done, you know, well ahead of time.
Okay.
Doug, your point is well taken, and who better to answer, but we'll have a very specified plan. I mean, this isn't, you know, hand-waving. These guys are, they know how to do it.
Okay.
And they'll have a plan for that.
We'll just have to submit a sort of a package, won't have a price attached, it'll just be a package including insurances and
That's right.
All the parameters of what'll be done.
Yes, correct. And one of the big issues that we're facing, we've been talking about for the last couple of years, is the maintenance of this. And the fact that if you go to a wood gutter, you know, who's going to maintain that? And with all due respect to the town, it's just not the sort of thing that's in their everyday, you know, their realm. So Tom has come up with, and with a lot of pushback from us, with a fiberglass gutter on the inside of an Alaskan yellow cedar exterior, okay? And if you saw it, I'm telling you, it'd be just, my mouth dropped when I saw it. And they have reproduced this in a shop in Woods Hole and is prepared to, he's already started it. He's, you know, prepared to run out the lengths that we need, provide every, I mean, it's, I tell you, I saw it, it's pretty genius for something like this, really is. Opened my eyes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just want to leave you with this thought, and I'll just show this to the audience. This is an 1888 photograph that we got from the archives of the Falmouth Historical Society showing what the much older May building looked like by 1888. And we're using this, we've adopted this as our guideline for what we're bringing the building back to because we can document, we can say it's authentic to do this, it's authentic to do that. So in Exterior Number One, we're taking care of a small piece here and some other stuff that doesn't show, and then our plan, Mike's going to correct me if I'm wrong when we get to it, but our plan is to build the streetscape next because we want this building to contribute to the attractiveness of the east end of Main Street. And the sooner we get to the outside and where people go, whoa, you know, that's different, that's better. So shutters, this is Clappard, right now it's Shingle. This is Clappard. There's a number of details here, including the very, very end, we'd like to add a fence because then that'll set off the remaining property. At one point, I don't know if you can see it very well, there was actually a barn back here and some outhouses because it became a working farm where the residents, as they were euphemically called, would try to raise money for their upkeep. So chickens, and I think they had sheep for wool and, you know. So this was a big property at one juncture. And so our goal is to return to Main Street a handsome-looking building with, there would be historical signage sitting on the lawn explaining what the function of the building was. Okay?
Can we authorize a vote to have them apply to MHC?
It's not on your agenda, so it should really be on your next regular agenda.
Is there any grant money to pay for Tom Renshaw's work? I was just curious.
No, I was literally thinking of a GoFundMe page, you know? There isn't one, this, Tom is one of those really zealous people who believe you've got to do it right, and so he's been problems.
Are you sure? Are you sure?
Oh, yeah. You know. And so he has been problem-solving in the manner that Mike has just described because he's so adamant about how we need to do this right. He knows more about this building than the entire rest of us put together, as much as we've spent time in it for several years now.
He has restored all the windows in the building to their original.
Yeah. Just years past, right?
Kudos to Tom.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Appreciate that. Mr. McConity, what are you folks here for? You waiting on the town meeting articles?
The troughs.
The troughs, yeah.
Oh, right, right. We're getting close. And we're up for it now. Request to relocate historic horse trough, water fountains. Have a lot of information in our packet from the advocacy group. This is another one of those 10-minute items, but we'll see what we can do.
Look, Arden timed yourself at four. Perfect. Because it's 10 minutes for the whole thing. That gives us six minutes to discuss.
Hi there. My name is Arden Edwards, and I live in Precinct One.
And I'm Catherine Bumpus, and I also live in Precinct One. And I'm going to try to see if I can load the presentation that Diane loaded for us.
Single-handedly.
Single-handedly, yes. But I don't know what she named it.
Fountain.
Fountain's first select board. There it is.
I'd like to thank the select board and the town officials for including this project on tonight's agenda. In 1989, the Steamship Authority reconfigured a small park on the site of the former fish market owned by Sam Cahoon in Woods Hole. At that time, we wanted to incorporate the 1903 Horse Trough Fountain in the new park, but we could not. Bill Owen, then Superintendent of the DPW, promised Mary Lou Smith, Chairman of the Falmouth Historical Commission and Editor of the Book of Falmouth, that the fountain would be returned to Woods Hole when we had a proper place for it. Now we have the ideal place, very close to where it was over 100 years ago. This fountain is one of two that are now on Gifford Street at the entrance to Falmouth's water filtration facility. The other fountain had been first installed at the Falmouth Village Green in 1898. These fountains are not just ornaments for a formal garden. They are documented historic resources of the town of Falmouth and assets of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. They are included in the Massachusetts Cultural Resource Information System database. Their current location does not allow for easy access for the public to appreciate them fully. There is no historic interpretive signage. This is the opportune time to decide to relocate the 1898 fountain to its original location at the Falmouth Village Green and the 1903 fountain to the proposed new Cahoon Park, very near its historical location. Water is basic to our everyday life. These fountains hearken back to the first public water in Falmouth. Each fountain will have its own historical interpretive signage outlining its role in the growth of the town as a year-round community with thriving industries as well as a destination and summer community. The town of Falmouth and the Water Department will be acknowledged for taking care of them for many years and for their renovation. Falmouth is the only town on Cape Cod which has been designated by the White House as a, quote, "preserve America" community for historic preservation efforts by so many residents over the years. We, as a town, should live up to that designation. Bill Owen was the Superintendent of the DPW for 22 years. That is dedication. He is one of three people to whom the new DPW building on Gifford Street is dedicated. Wouldn't it be wonderful for our town to follow through on the wishes of Bill Owen, Mary Lou Smith, and our current residents? Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'd be happy to answer questions. We know that there would be lots of details to work out involving this move. We know that Steamship has integrated one of these fountains into the new park design and is willing to take it on, and we would offer ourselves to help sort out whatever issues there were if the board thinks that this is a good idea to move forward with.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, questions from the board first?
Are they currently operational? Are they currently?
No, they're not. I believe there is water and electricity to them, but they were never hooked up.
Would they be operational, the one going to Woods Hole? Was that the idea?
That is the idea, yes. We also would have solar panels there. I don't know if it would be run three seasons of the year or four seasons of the year. Hopefully four.
Okay. And I totally understand the historical significance of being downtown. I do wonder if somewhere like Beebe Woods might be a good place for a second fountain since people actually ride horses through there and not necessarily on Main Street?
That's to be talked about, decided later. Okay. But that's, there are all sorts of ideas that are great ideas. Thank you.
Well, if nobody else has an immediate question, I'll just say, when I first, when you first brought this to me, I was kind of inclined to say maybe one should go down to Woods Hole, but I was a little hesitant on the Main Street one. I wasn't really even going to put it on the agenda here because I didn't feel like it was really well thought through, even though you have photos showing that it was there before. We'd also have to consider, you know, what's the age of the fountain that's there? Does the Historic District or Historic Commission consider that to be historic? So I'd like to
I don't think so. I don't think so.
I don't either, but
I don't think so.
I'd like to get some feedback on their perspective of it before we make
It's not, it's a well. It's like a wishing well.
The wishing well.
The banks of the green.
Yeah. And that's pretty much in the spot where that was.
That is, yeah. It could be moved, that one could be moved, it could be moved to the Mullin School where the kids have a garden, a hoop house. They'd love a wishing well. I don't think it has any great historical significance. There is a lovely plaque on it, however. There's a lovely plaque on it that could be moved, that would have to be moved.
Okay.
About the burying ground, I think.
Okay. Let's let Mr. McConity have a chance to speak now.
Good evening, Peter McConity, Director of Public Works. I'm just going to close this out. I've got a short presentation, trying to keep within the time limits. Just got several slides to present. Also with me tonight is, also with me tonight is our current Water Superintendent, Cahal. As you remember, Cahal was brought on board last year. He wasn't with the town of Falmouth and Public Works during the initial construction and design of this project. And also with me is Mike Righetto. He's the chief water treatment operator at the plant. He was in Falmouth during the full design period and the construction period, and actually he spent many days cleaning up the, these horse troughs, these horse fountains, and actually was cleaning out the insides of them and getting them ready for the restoration. So, understanding that there's been a lot of correspondence and emails back and forth on this, I'll try to be, I'll try to be succinct. So, from the public works side, the horse fountains located at Falmouth Public Water Department, the date is unknown as to when the horse fountains were moved from Woods Hole and the Village Green to the former Water Department, Water Division building located at 10 Pumpin' Station Road. The horse fountains were placed in storage at that location. It was many decades. It wasn't, it was many, many decades. In 1994, 1995, our former Falmouth Director of Public Works, Raymond Jack, came in as the Water Utilities Manager's position, and he had the fountains removed from the storage at 10 Pumpin' Station Road and placed at the Water Division building entrance when he was the Utilities Manager position. And he also had our former Park Superintendent, Brian Dale, do some landscaping around the areas when they were placed. In 2012, the design began on the water treatment plant, just call it in short WTP. In 2014, Raymond Jack, along with former Water Superintendent Stephen Rafferty, began the process of including the horse fountains with the water treatment plant site and landscape design. The restoration of the horse fountains included the inclusion of the horse fountains with the site and landscaping design plans, the design, the transportation of the, of the horse fountains to New England Sand Blasting in Rochester for three weeks of repair, sandblasting, and epoxy-coated painting. The design and placement of two concrete pads along with utility The design and placement of two concrete pads along with utility conduits at the entrance to the Water Treatment Plant for the placement of the horse fountains. These concrete pads actually had a drain line in them. They had a water supply line into them, going into them, and they also had an electric line going into them for the lights on top, fully intense for the, for these horse fountains to be fully functional. The design and placement of the two concrete pads, I went through that, the transportation and placement of the horse fountains on the concrete pads, and the fabrication of two replica gas lantern-style lights. The lights were installed in 2018. Most of this landscaping work and most of the design work was done by Moskowski Associates Landscaping. They did a lot of the landscape design, they did a lot of the work, and they did the transportation. These, Public Works did not want to do any transportation and movement of these fountains. They're very, they're delicate, basically. And we didn't want to have any problems with moving them. So, here's some photos in the 2014 timeframe, prior to the restoration. So as you can see on the left, the fountain, one of the fountains was missing the center light column. On the right, the fountain surface was, it's showing rust and pitting. These photos were taken to the best that we could take them with zooming in on them, but as you can see, there's some rust and pitting on the bases of them. Some additional photos of the detail, the center column detail showing the poor condition of the fountain's surface, and on the right, the center column center piping showing the scaling and rust in the centerline piping if these fountains were to be made functional again. In 2012 to 2018, the Water Treatment Plant began design and construction. In 2012, with the design, these, these horse fountains were included with the site grading plan, the Asbeld Swing Tie Plan, the Site Utilities Plan, the Water Main Improvements Plan, the Landscaping Plan, and as I have mentioned, the concrete base pad construction. So the photos after they were restored and relocated, on the left is the fountain with the new fabricated light locating on the, located on the designed concrete base, and on the right, the second fountain showing the industrial enamel green paint. On the right side, as the sun was shining on, on, you can, on the side of that lantern, on the side of that fountain and lantern, you can see the Green Bridge industrial epoxy paint that was put onto that. This photo was taken just a couple, actually, this photo was taken from Google, Google Maps. As you can see, this is the fountain in 2018 that's on the north side of the driveway. It doesn't have the light lanthorn on it, so it was still, the gaslight lantern was still being fabricated to be placed on, onboard on this. In 2018, on January 2nd of 2018, our former Water Superintendent, he had a article put into the Falmouth Enterprise on the historic fountains. And a portion of the article described that the fountains were built in, the fountains were built in 1898 and 1903, and they were placed under operation as part of the original water system. The Falmouth Water System was operated by a privately-owned company incorporated in 1898 when the Long Pond Station was opened. The private water company presented the town with one horse fountain in 1899. That fountain was installed at the Village Green. The town purchased the water company in 1902 and, at town meeting, approved building a second horse fountain in 1903 to be located in Woods Hole. Added underneath is the horse fountains were part of the Falmouth, original Falmouth Water System, hence their current location at the Water Treatment Plant. So in conclusion, some bullet items. The Water Treatment Plant design started in 2012. Construction started in 2015. Construction was completed in 2018. The horse fountains were included in the site and landscape design plans. On a monthly basis during the plant construction, former Director of Public Works Raymond Jack and Water Superintendent Stephen Rafferty presented the progress plan to the Select Board. In addition, they hosted multiple tours at the plant during construction. Also during construction, during design and construction phase, Stephen Rafferty spoke with many town residents and groups regarding the horse fountain restoration. At no time during that seven-year design and construction period timeframe did anyone ever mention bringing up the initiative to relocate the fountains to other areas in town. The first I heard the comment that former Director of Public Works, Bill Owen, promised one of these fountains to be relocated in either Woods Hole or somewhere in town when there was an area for it, was last summer when Arden Edwards came to my office for a meeting to discuss about this. So that was the first time that I ever heard that there was any discussion back in 1989 or what have you on this. I've been with the town for 15 years. I've worked closely with Raymond Jack and Steve Rafferty. I was not included on the complete design and construction of this facility, although I was part of the design phase and doing the group tours and working with the contractor on the, on the construction during the punch list items. So if Public Works was aware of this covenant initiative, we would not have gone through the restoration effort and had them placed at the new Water Treatment Plant. They still would be at the former Water Treatment Entrance Road. The horse fountains were part of the Falmouth Historical Water System and should remain at the Water Treatment Plant. In our opinion, the fountain's significance is their connection with the original water supply system, not the area or town where they were placed. Funds for the horse fountain, horse fountains restoration was paid out through a state-revolving fund program account, along with the design and the construction. If a decision is made to relocate the horse fountains, the town will need to get approval from the state-revolving fund office prior to relocation. And finally, Public Works is not in agreement to relocate these horse fountains. However, if the Select Board does approve the relocation, Public Works requests that a suitable sum of town funds be included with their vote in order for Public Works to replace the fountains with an appropriate entrance monument or memorials. So if these water, horse fountains are relocated, the premise of these water fountains at the entrance of the Water Department, the landscaping from Moskowski was based around these, all the landscaping, all the trees and shrubs were based around these two horse fountains along with the concrete pad. If the horse fountains are removed from this area, we're going to have two blank concrete pads. Public Works is going to need to do something to restore the area and bring that back. It's a, it's a beautiful facility, it's a beautiful entrance, and we don't want to lose that. We strongly recommend that the horse fountains remain at the Water Treatment Plant. And as I said, back when, during construction, the director, the former director and former Water Superintendent gave multiple walkthroughs for that plant during construction, and it was in the dozens. It wasn't a few. It was in the dozens because I attended many, many of them. And I know they did town officials, state officials, state reps. I know there was many, many meetings up there. So at no time during the construction and during the design did Public Works ever hear that these, the initiative to relocate these water fountains.
I have a question, Peter. On that picture you showed of the innards of the fountain, and it's kind of corroded and so forth, would there be more work required to make them functional as well?
No, actually, with the work that the Water Department staff did and the work that when this was brought up to the sand blasting company and restoration company, these are intact, they're put back together fully. Former Director of Public Works Raymond Jack, when he had these removed out of storage and put at the original 10 Pumping Station Road entrance, he had them retrofitted for electricity from the gas to electricity. So they were, at that time, they were ready to go. These were cleaned up and put in. But these photos were taken from 2012, 13, 14.
So if you wanted to operate them, they're functional?
If they wanted to be operated, they're functional, yeah. The concrete pads, the conduit, everything's run to, we just never went into the final phase and had them up and, up and running. But these, these water fountains were approved on the original design plans when the Water Treatment was built. And like I said, that, that process was seven years.
Right.
So it was completed in 2018.
Yes, did you want to speak?
Come on up.
Yeah, well, we want the people at home to be able to hear you.
You just have to go up to the microphone.
Just that, I understand and appreciate the remarkably long timeframe for this to evolve, but at no point did I see a reference to the Historical Commission. And I mention that because the Historical Commission is responsible for cultural assets, historical assets, not just buildings. And so at some point, since historical monuments were being repaired and then moved, the Historical Commission could, should have been consulted. I think that would have, would have led to less sort of acrimony and headbutting now.
Possibly.
What I can say to that is I know our former Director of Public Works spoke with Ann Sears back in the 1990s when this was doing some relocation on this. And I didn't put a lot of the background for the historical information because of my understanding that Arden Edwards and that group had the information already put forward with their package when they were seeking to have this put on the inventory, the Mass, Massachusetts Historical and the Dory List.
Yeah, it just went on.
Correct.
Yeah.
We do have an email from Ann Sears. Actually, she sent it to my old personal email address because I guess that's what she had listed, just advocating for this relocation as well. What about, so now if you had to have that new top piece made, seems that we could probably make replicas of these if we wanted to. I wonder what that would cost?
Lots.
I think about, maybe about two, the whole thing, about $250,000 if this was, if this is the same fountain that they redid for Newport. I don't know what that would be.
Interesting. Come on.
I think that the DPW deserves a huge amount of thanks for the care that they've taken of these for so long. And I understand that it's hard for them to hear that years ago, there was a lot of discussion about this and that now we have a location. In 2012, we didn't have a location. We had no indication that Steamship was going to be rebuilding the park in an appropriate location that would allow for integration of this in the location that's so close to where it was. And Peter knows that there's a lot of institutional memory in the community and often knows who to go to. I went on one of those tours of the new Water Filtration Plant, and it did not occur to me to say, oh, look, you're going to have one of these out here. You know Woods Hole wants it back someday?
Yeah.
You know, because it just didn't happen. I was aware that it was an out-there issue from 32 years ago. People were talking about this. Peter wasn't here. Arden was. It's been a topic of conversation. When the possibility of integrating it into the park in Woods Hole came up again, not until 2018, 2017, 2018, that was well-received in the community. It is one of the few things that Steamship has been amenable to, that the community has brought up. So it matters. I think that while it is lovely to drive by them and know that that is the entrance to the pumping station, I used to drive by them when they were on the other side and say, oh, look, there they are, and recognize that they were historic monuments to the water. But you could get a whole lot more information, you could tell the story of water in the community and how important that is and how that's a public good if they were someplace that people could interact with them on a daily basis.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I might, I sent a note to the board. I respectfully encourage the board to consider what I would deem a reasonable compromise. Long Pond was the original site of the source of water and remains the primary source of water for the town, and I think it would be appropriate for one of these fountains to remain at Long Pond as it was designed to be, and a second one considered for relocation to Woods Hole, which was the furthest extent of the water system at that time. And I think in recognition of it, and as it's been noted, it's a private location owned by Steamship, which has been designated for potential, potentially housing one of these fountains, with one remaining then at the Water Filtration Plant, and the second one in Woods Hole through whatever processes need to occur to have this thing happen. And I think that would be a reasonable compromise that would respect the extraordinary effort of Public Works, which literally rescued these two fountains. I've spoken to Ray Jack many times about it. They were deteriorating very rapidly, and they were literally saved. And I'd certainly like to see Public Works' extraordinary effort recognized by allowing one of these to remain at the Water Treatment Facility if that would be the determination of the board.
Comments from the board members?
I think that's a, that's a fair compromise. I mean, I would say that, you know, with this, with all due respect to the importance of historical things, we change, we evolve. That is the nature of, of a town, of a community. When you can hearken back to some of these, these pieces and you have something that's beautiful like this and you can put it on display, it's wonderful. But it's just like the poorhouse. It is living a new life. It's going to have health and human services. So, you know, we have to integrate sort of, we have to be able to come to terms and integrate some of that history with where we are now and acknowledging some of those changes and that evolution. And I think that that compromise does a good job of that. And I think, you know, additionally, you know, I do think it'll create a little bit more care that's going to have to be taken because sitting at Gifford Street is not the same as sitting 40 feet from a bunch of saltwater and a lot of cars and a lot of people. It's a very different situation, so I think it's going to create some level of care. I think that would be part of a similar situation if we put one back where it was on Main Street. You know, that's, that is an area that gets lots of use, lots of traffic, lots of plows in that area. I like the idea that Julian is putting forth because I do think that it's a, it's a fair compromise. I think it would be nice to be able to see one of these, you know, for the public to be able to view these. They are beautiful structures. They can do that in Woods Hole. And yet, at the same time, we can really honor those efforts that DPW has made, and not just the efforts, but the fact that we have built something really amazing there. There are very few water filtration systems. I know it's not as exciting as that beautiful, beautiful fountain. There are very few facilities like that, and I do think that that's a good compromise.
I would fully support moving one of the troughs back to Woods Hole.
Any more comments? Yes, come on up.
I happen to know a little bit about this, and while we're talking about history, I might as well enlighten people. In 1896, when the water system was put in, Woods Hole was nothing like Woods Hole as now. It was actually the, pretty much owned and run by the Great Pacific Guano Company. They used to take ships out to Guano Islands where birds would rest and-
Relieve themselves.
Relieve themselves. And they would be used as fertilizer. They would bring it into Woods Hole, and the trains would, would run it up the road and ship it all over the country for fertilizer. And that's what they used for fertilizer until after World War I, they had natural gas to get the nitrogen from. But back to the Long Pond, Long Pond wasn't even designed for drinking water. The richest people by far in Falmouth were the owners and the managers of the Great Pacific Guano Company. And that Long Pond was gravity-fed to Woods Hole, and it was not for water consumption, it was for fire protection. And the original pipes were actually made out of wood, hollowed-out wooden logs. And I know about 15 or 20 years ago, a friend of mine showed me the maps, and they actually still, at that point in time, had some of those wooden pipes remaining under some of the smaller streets in Woods Hole, but just to kind of pull the history together for you.
Maybe we can dig one up and put it in the park along with this. Yes, Peter?
Just one comment. As I had mentioned, that if the Select Board does approve, vote to approve to have-
As I had mentioned, that if, if the Select Board does approve, vote to approve to have one or both of the horse fountains relocated with the vote, Public Works would appreciate if, if along with the vote, we could put in a suitable funding source so we could be able to work up there to replace what would be relocated.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I don't think we had, we're taking a vote tonight. I mean, there's some research that needs to be done, particularly regarding what you, you know, if we had state revolving funds, we need to work through that process. So this is, this to me is a discussion about where this board might go, and then we have some homework to do, which will include that piece, I think.
And there was some discussion with the Steamship Authority's architect, who said that he had sources for, you know, significant architectural pieces that you might want to consider, that they might even consider some funding for. I don't know what he was alluding to because we never did have a follow-up conversation.
I know there's ours, or two of us.
You have to come up to the mic, please.
We do have at least a couple more years to plan for this, so.
I know there are two great architectural salvage places. One's in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, and another one is in Portland, Maine. And you can find beautiful old relics that could be appropriate for this situation, especially old lamps, because there's electricity right there at Gifford Street. That would be appropriate. And they'd be nice and tall and look, look great.
Maybe we could actually put signage where the one that, if we take that one away, where we could put signage there that would say what it is and invite people to, to walk around.
Oh, yeah, definitely. I think that's part of the concept.
It's actually been about four or five years since I've been there, but the great American salvage company that used to be in Wareham across from where Bennys or now it's Harbor Freight, last time I was there, they had a couple of large, old cast iron, original gas lamps with multiple heads on them. They were extremely attractive and gathering a huge amount of dust. I mean, you might find them there. It's, I think, on Cove Street in New Bedford.
Okay, that's it for that discussion for now. We're going to take that under advisement and see how those details can be worked out.
So Betsy used to kiss for us.
You gonna give me a kiss?
A bag of them.
Thank you.
We've been good, huh? Okay.
I have to share.
Yeah, I'll pass them along.
Roll one of those this way, will you?
You guys?
Julian?
I'm good.
Yeah, I need something. Right.
These cost less than $50, right?
Okay, now we're gonna have consideration of our vote for the waiver of the right of first refusal of 31.2 acres on Route 151 to be in effect up until a potential closing date of December 31st, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Laura Moynihan, Falmouth attorney. I represent the property owner, CLSV Associates Limited Partnership. So we are here in our disposition notice to the town of September of 2021. We had asked for the vote for the waiver of right of first refusal and we had asked, also asked for the board to consider extending the one-year period to the end of 2024 because the proposed buyer of this development was looking at an affordable housing project, which was discussed, I think, at length at your December 20th meeting. And one year is just simply not sufficient time to plan, permit, and finance an affordable housing development. I have been working with affordable housing developers in Falmouth for 27 years and I've given you some sample timelines for two projects that I've worked on, but I have worked on many projects. You'll see from those timelines that you, you're typically looking at two and a half to three and a half years to get through the process. I've given you the example of Little Pond Place, which actually was quite a bit longer from when the town acquired it in 2010 to when the RFP was issued in 2015 to when the permits were issued and the project was financed in 2019 and finished in 2020. I've given you the for-profit example of a 12-unit development, which you'll see from the for-profit development, typically the permit phase goes a lot longer than the nonprofit, but the financing phase is quicker. Nonprofits are looking for government money. It takes time. So hopefully those timelines will give you an idea and support our request to have this waiver of right of first refusal apply to the end of the year of 2024 as we requested in the disposition notice. The vote that the board took on December 20th to waive the right of first refusal, the vote did not include, include the latter request that was in our notice letter, was that the waiver of right of first refusal specifically state that it would be in force and effect until the end of the year of 2024. Realistically speaking, it will be very difficult, if not impossible, to have any developer invest the time and the money in the plans and the permitting, under a purchase and sale agreement, without knowing at the end of the day that the developer can actually acquire the property. It's just not financially practical or reasonable. They need the time, they need the contingencies to work through everything that they need to do, and they're probably spending, you know, $100,000 or more by the time they get to the Zoning Board of Appeals on engineering, architects, the plans involved are substantial. So a lot has changed since 2003, when this right of first refusal was given to the town. In, in those days, the Cape Cod Commission was kind of in its infancy. I don't think there really was a clear understanding of how long it would take to develop a 30-acre parcel on Cape Cod. And certainly the affordable housing permitting has changed since 2003. You know, I remember projects that were done in three months. It, it's not like that anymore. It's a very long involved process, particularly when you're looking for grant money or state money or town money. You know, here we are, we started this in September and we're now in March and we haven't even got to plan development because we haven't got through this process yet. So there's a lot involved in these projects. So we're respectfully asking for your consideration of all of that and to vote that the waiver that you granted on December 20th will be in force and effect to the potential closing date of December 31, 2024 for this particular buyer, Michael Glasso, under his development entity, 31 Acres LLC. And I did submit a document to the town manager's office for signature as well that incorporates all of that. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. Could you describe why the request is to go through 2024 and not just next year for you to come back next year for us to review again?
Well, because between now and next year, if, if the town does grant the extension, essentially I'll call it, the buyer will start the plan development phase. So this is where the money starts getting spent on engineering, all the architecture, all the concept plans, hiring all the professionals, the environmental studies that have to go into it. So if a year from now, he has spent all that money and invested all that money in the property and for some reason, maybe the town changes its mind, maybe the board makeup is different and the waiver isn't revoted, then he's lost all that money. That's the reality of it, that there has to be assurance in the process for the developer that the right to buy this property isn't going to be taken away from the developer in a year or even two years. He needs the time to be able to, to do this.
Any other comments or questions? I for one don't see any harm in it. They've already passed on the property. This makes it work for him.
Yeah, if it doesn't go through, we, our right of first refusal is restored.
Correct.
So we haven't lost anything.
Except the time.
A second, exactly.
Time to do what?
Change our minds. We, we changed our minds.
To do everything that the developer would be doing anyway. What would we put it to use for?
Well, maybe then we'll build a train station if it works out.
Yeah, I mean, I, think about how slow town works, too.
Like I said, time.
And this schedule that this developer has, I can tell you, it's a very reasonable schedule. We, we've, we worked on it with the developer. It's, it's not inflated, it's a reasonable schedule, given what he's proposing here, what he's looking for. He's looking for a LIP approval, which has to come back to you. It has to go to the state. That could be a year in itself to get site approval after the plans are done. So it's, it's going to be a long process, but I do think that the schedule is, is reasonable and, and we worked very hard on narrowing that down as best we could.
Little Pond Place is a situation where the town purchased the property and it took that long, 10 years, to get pockets in there.
I guess...
It's from an efficiency standpoint.
I guess...
I don't think we would do any better.
I was just gonna say, as long as the process is moving forward and, you know, if there's some, some, some deficiency, some issue that arises that makes it clear that Mr. Glasso isn't going to go forward, you know, rather than sort of just waiting for that time to toll, I would want this board to be informed. So if you get somewhere down the line and either you just decide this isn't the, you know, whatever, this project isn't right, it's not going to work for me, that we're, that we're notified of that. So we're not just waiting around to 2024.
That's fair. We certainly can notify you and, and your waiver applies only to this buyer.
Yes.
So if something goes sideways and this buyer terminates, then...
Right, we're back to square one.
Correct.
Yeah.
With that, is there a motion? Anymore?
I, I move approval of extending this right of first refusal for this 31.2 acres to December 31st of 2024.
There a second?
I guess I would just ask to condition it that, what I just noted, the language of if, if Mr. Glasso decides not to go forward, that we're notified, rather than just waiting for the time to toll.
I had to include that.
And with that, I would second it.
Does notified mean that the right of first, I'm sorry, does not, would notified mean that the right of first refusal goes back to where we have an option to purchase it if we want to?
Yes, if he decides he's not going to go forward, then we get to exercise our right again.
To purchase.
So I just want to make sure that we're not just leaving an open-ended...
Right.
Till 2024 time period and, you know.
We would, the property owner would notify you if the purchase and sale agreement with this buyer was terminated. And then that would obviously terminate the waiver of right of first refusal as it applied to this specific buyer.
Right.
Okay.
So if I could, just to clarify, so that would not immediately trigger the town's right of first refusal again?
It's when another buyer comes.
The right of first refusal would be in play if the property were to be sold.
Correct, you'd be back to square one.
Okay.
Have that opportunity all over.
We have a motion and a second, and I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Can you post?
Post.
Four to one.
You always say that.
Just to be clear for the record. But it didn't, it's not always four to one.
It always isn't, I'm always the one, standing alone.
Discuss and vote revisions to special events policy.
I think the revisions are good. That's what I'm gonna say. I think that Mr. Suso took our suggestions, he corrected it, he put in the language about the appeals, which we had asked him to do, saying that individuals can appeal the decision to the Select Board. He also put down the, you know, put in the issue around recycling, et cetera.
I, I would just like to make some grammatical changes. These are pretty minor, but on the first page, the second paragraph under special events policy, the reading of, of that doesn't really work well for me anyway. So what I would say in the second sentence there, it says the Recreation Department and then in parentheses, Gus Canny Recreational Building, semicolon, grounds and recreational facilities. I think we should just simply say Gus Canny Recreational Building, comma, grounds and recreation, and, and facilities, and get rid of recreational, the second recreational, so that reads Gus Canny Recreational Building, comma, grounds and facilities. And then in the very next sentence, similarly, under library trustees, all public libraries and library grounds, because it needs to be associated with the library facilities and grounds. So I would recommend those changes. Edit. Go ahead, that's it for me.
I have a question.
Did you get that? Was that clear?
Actually, I didn't. If I could borrow Sam's notes after today.
You may have it, yes.
Under 3H, the Police Department recommends a number, location, duration of police...
I'm sorry, what?
3H.
Okay.
3H. And I, I realize I didn't know this, is there a fee associated with that?
Yes.
Is, should that be listed?
They pay a police, it depends on what they're gonna have, how long they're gonna have it for. So they, they, so generally, if you're gonna have a special event, the planner directly contracts the police department, their detailed department, and they tell them how many officers they recommend, how many hours, you know, how many hours. So they usually handle it because it won't be a set fee.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. It's different for each one.
From staff?
Okay, so I would recommend approval of this new policy.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I didn't keep on myself. Is there one more?
Thank you.
Nope.
That's okay.
One less to do on Saturday?
Yes.
Could you, will you forward those problematic votes?
To ask the same thing.
To all of us.
All of us, so we can have, believe to think about it.
Yep.
Next is, can, are we still gonna do the warrant?
Yes.
We've given you a handout with some suggestions, if the board would like to entertain those.
Article four, to see if the town will vote to amend the position classification plan for ASME Unit B, positions effective July 1st, 2022, the position classification changes are as follows. Delete zoning administrator grade six, add zoning administrator grade seven. Hourly minimum wage changes from 3257 and 4247 to a range of 3418 and 4463.
Yeah, actually, FinCom's already acted on that. Certainly the board's welcome to, but FinCom has given it a...
All right, we'll cross that.
Yeah, I don't think we have to do anything with that one. Others may concur.
Very well. Article 17.
I'm sorry, you jumped to 17 already?
Well, I'm going by the recommended, the ones that pertain.
Okay.
Unless you guys want to go through the whole list, we can't.
No, I just, I just, no, I just want to ask a question about Article nine.
Okay.
To see if the town will vote to appropriate seller money. Do the other post-employment benefits trust fund for the further appropriation and to determine how the same shall be raised or do or take any other action on this matter? On request of the, of Select Board, the FinCom actually concurred with the $500,000 and, and this is a money article, right?
Right, it's FinCom has primary recommendation.
Yeah, so...
Yep.
That's not one we have, I'm sorry.
No, it's not one for...
It's not on the list, but...
Okay, even though it says on request of the Select Board...
It's got our name on it.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, gotcha. Excuse me.
Yeah, it's the sponsor of the article versus the, the board that is...
Yep, I'm catching up now, sorry about that.
Okay, so, do, is there any other ones before 17 that anybody wants to comment on? Or, I mean, it's not really our purview to recommend all of them. on? Or I mean, it's not really our purview to recommend all of them. The next one is article seventeen. It's directly related to our recommendation.
Now, the only question I had about seventeen is enforcement. Hereby authorizes the adoption of a mandatory program for the collection of storage, transportation, removal of waste materials, and recycling of waste materials in the town.
And what's the question, Sam?
Who enforces it?
How's it gonna be?
It's the Health Department.
How's it gonna be enforced?
Health Department.
If I may, so this is a bylaw that authorizes the Board of Health to promulgate regulations.
Okay.
So your question is is a very good one, and that will need to be addressed in the regulations adopted by the Board of Health.
But just a reminder that there's already a mechanism in place that's just not enforced as much, or we don't have a good linkage between the 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 holler is supposed to identify loads that are problematic and notify individuals. Having this bylaw might help us to give some more teeth to that process.
We did get a note from the Chair of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee endorsing this.
Long in the, long in the making.
Supporting the article.
Is there a motion to recommend this as printed?
To recommend it as printed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article twenty-two. Next relevant. To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to grant certain easements to N-Star Electric Company DBA as ever source energy in connection with its proposed additional underground power supply cables to Martha's Vineyard on, in, over, under, and across the following town property. And we're not gonna go into all the detail of where all this is because we haven't yet got enough information to make a recommendation. So this one's gonna be on hold for now, until we can get a little more detail and work out our negotiations, right?
I think that's right. So.
Okay.
We'll make the recommendation on town four, I guess.
Unless we can do it in, hopefully, we can do it in advance.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Should article twenty-three be on this list? Would that be the next one? Or not?
Um, no, that's petitioner's article. Do we, we should be recommend.
It's a, it's a money article.
Yeah, it's not us, because she's.
Oh, okay.
Oh, right, right, right. Okay. Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to adopt the following as the general bylaw and to insert it into the code of the town of Falmouth, Massachusetts. Unless explicitly exempted all persons, municipal employees, commercial leaf blower operators, their employees shall comply with all the provisions of this article and regulations. Only leaf blowers that are portable, handheld, or backpack style powered by fuel or electricity are subject to these regulations. All leaf blowers shall meet current EPA standards and cannot emit noise greater than 67 decibels as rated by the manufacturer. No more than two leaf blowers can be used simultaneously on parcels less than 10,000 square feet. Gas-powered leaf blowers can only be used March 15 to May 15, October 15 to December 31. Hours operation Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Electric and battery leaf operators can be used all year, including Sundays and legal holidays. After a weather emergency storm, the DPW, the Director of the DPW, may suspend the above regulations if approved. If approved, the provisions of this bylaw will become effective January 1, 2024 on petition of Patricia P. Johnson. Yes?
I have a lot of concerns about this article.
Same.
So I, what I will say is, I think it just makes more sense to perhaps have a noise ordinance for certain hours rather than all of these things. I think it puts a burden on employers and individuals who already have these items that are not acceptable by this policy. The enforcement of it, when I, I know when I asked about that, that was still, you know, unknown. I understand the concern, but I just don't think that this article is appropriate as written.
I would, I don't, I share the concerns. I don't think I could vote for it at this time. I think it just, there hasn't been, you know what I would say, is other petitioners, when they sometimes try and have do articles like this, will hold some public forums, some dialogues with dialogue with individuals who whom this would impact most significantly, landscapers.
Landscaping companies.
I don't think that that has really happened. And I, so I I just don't feel like I have enough information to know how feasible, how impactful this would be. So I I don't think I could support it at this time, as much as I I understand her sentiment, and I really respect her always for bringing these things forward.
I would say that without that outreach, it's not likely to be successful at town meeting anyway.
Yeah. Pretty, pretty big burden on property owners and landscapers.
Yes.
I don't know how you enforce it.
I would vote, so.
Ready for prime time?
Right. I would vote indefinite postponement.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Although I like the idea of considering it.
I just think it needs a little more.
It needs a lot more outreach and, okay.
They can make a positive motion.
Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote a second time to authorize the select board to take all necessary and appropriate action to establish and maintain in accordance with the provisions of chapter 164 of the general laws and in accordance with the rules, regulations, and orders of the Department of Public Utilities and the Department of Telecommunications and Cable, a municipal lighting plant for all purposes allowable under the laws of the Commonwealth, including without limitation the operation of a telecommunications system and related services, or take any action relative thereto on petition of Falmouth Incorporated. And we have talked about the fact that we would like to see the the language say that this is for broadband only.
Sorry.
But I guess this language is statutory and the intent can only be placed in the explanation.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the language. I understand Mr. Moriarty's concern, but that's not what this article is article is about.
Right.
I move that we recommend it as printed.
I would second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I think we need to move forward.
No.
Oh, okay.
Four to one.
Four to one?
I just wanted to say.
Four to one.
I'm gonna write it right here. Article twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to, will vote pursuant to Mass General Laws, chapter 164, section 55, to elect a municipal light board consisting of five citizens of the town, each for a term of three years, with the first election being held, date to be determined. Pursuant to the provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws of the five-member board, initially, one shall be chosen for one year, two for two years, two for three years, and thereafter, the term shall be for three years. The municipal light board shall have the authority to construct, purchase, or lease a municipal light plant in accordance with the vote of the town and to maintain and operate the same on petition of Falmouth Incorporated.
I might say that the Finance Committee actually changed the amount of money for the elections line item in the budget and added $10,000 to cover the cost of the win against the November election.
Okay, good. Is there a motion to recommend as printed?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Okay, article twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to petition the General Court for special act authorizing the select board to call a special election of the town on the same day in November 2022 as a general state election for the purpose of electing a municipal light plant board consisting of five citizens of the town, provided that initially, one shall be chosen for a term ending at the annual town election in May 2024. Initially, two shall be chosen for a term ending at the annual town election, May 2025. And initially, two shall be chosen for a term ending at the annual town election in May 2026. And thereafter, the term shall be for three years. Or do or take any other action on this matter on request of the select board.
I move approval. You have to have this to go along with the other.
Yeah, as printed.
As printed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay, article twenty-eight. Ask the town to vote to create a new full-time position of sustainability director or a similar director-level position charged with prioritizing and integrating sustainability and coastal resiliency policies and programs into activities of all town departments and committees. This article would require a commitment on behalf of the select board to A, create this position, B, outline specific duties, C, determine reporting structure, D, assign compensation, and E, decide the hiring date at their 2022 strategic planning session.
Do we need to read it all out?
I guess I don't.
I would recommend as printed.
Aye, second.
I just, I really just wanna make some comments about this. So when when Falcon came to us.
Oops, Falcon?
Falmouth Climate Action Network. I'm sorry, you were.
We're on twenty-eight.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, where you you came on behalf of Falcon.
As individuals.
Okay. Okay, excuse me. Okay.
Yeah.
So when the members who I just happen to know are part of Falcon came and presented to us on December 6, I thought that we as a board had made it very clear that we were going to include this discussion at our strategic planning mission and that we, at our strategic planning session, and that we all thought that the mission of this was a really good idea. And so I was admittedly disappointed when this came as a petitioner's article because I felt like we as the board should have taken the initiative to do this at our strategic planning meeting in August. And I realized that would have been in the future. But I was disappointed that it felt like the members of the community who brought this to us did not trust that we were actually gonna follow through on what we said in December. So I wholeheartedly support this article, and I think it's it's a great position, but I just felt that that needed to be said.
Okay.
And and I think that's a really interesting perspective, and I think, looking backwards, I think you're absolutely correct. And I think still that the fact remains that we didn't do anything with it. And so I feel really strongly that we that we move this forward. And as we start planning in our strategic planning, I think you're absolutely right. We need to do a better job of bringing these positions forward ourselves as a board, rather than putting it on to the community to to bring it to us and fight for it.
Exactly. And so adding to that, I would like for a member of the board, if amicable, to work with all these people listed on the explanation, so that the explanation comes from, comes from us as well as the petitioners.
That we participate.
Yeah.
I will say, I've heard feedback from some people in town who feel like that really we need both positions, a coastal resiliency administrator and a sustainability coordinator.
Quite possibly. And I know that that's something that we talked about. The consultant might tell us.
Right.
That we need.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And.
I'm just concerned if we don't, if we don't recommend this really strongly, it'll wait for another year or another opportunity for the select board to talk about it, which is why I totally agree with everything you just said, and I really strongly wanna push it.
Second.
Chair?
As printed?
Let's miss.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, I I'm not gonna speak for or against recommending as printed, but I did just wanna insert now for you and the public, as far as the explanation goes, that we probably should mention that this is a non-binding sort of sentiment of the meeting article because town meeting does not have the authority to create a position. And and the, you know, the article is worded in such a way that it's it's looking forward to a future budget. So it sort of anticipates that this isn't something that is legally taking effect right away. It's more of a statement from town meeting that they want the select board to act. You clearly want to act on it anyway, but I just, for for precedent, because we don't want people to look back at this and say, what do you mean? You can't, county can't create a position? Well, that's that's the purview of the select board. And it goes in, you know, to create a position, I think it's a four-fifths vote, actually, of the select board, and then it needs to be funded, included in the budget with an appropriation.
If it was the same thing.
So I just wanna, if we can make sure to just include that in the explanation.
All right. And also, and this is not really part of this article, but if I could just mention that I'd like the consultant to be able to have the latitude to consider whether the position really can be consolidated into two, or if we should be planning a little further, a little bigger. I mean, it might be that we really should be considering two positions.
What I might say in that regard, it may be an evolving thing, where we start off with one position, and then next year, we see that, you know, it really is gonna require that much more time from an individual, and then we'll add it in another year.
Mm-hmm.
So dictating the timing, you know, it might not be easy to predict right now.
Right. Because we did have.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, because we did have in the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee's report that they definitely recommended hiring coastal resiliency coordinator. I don't know if that's the name that they used, but a person in charge of coastal resiliency. So.
I guess I would just say that we just have to remember that we don't just have one individual. They have to have support staff. So one person, one position has sort of a natural flow of other expenses and sort of department structure associated with it. So of course, if we had unlimited funds, you'd want someone just on coastal resiliency, maybe one just on sustainability. But that's not even just two salaries. That's gonna be everybody else. To make it effective, you can't just stick one person in some room and say, hey, you're gonna solve all the problems. They have to have staff. They have to have support in order to implement those things. So this is a start, and I think it's an important start. And we can, we can craft what that looks like. And if the, if we have a consultant that says, actually, this is sort of more in line, again, we can kind of craft what that position means.
Okay. Any more comments? It's.
No, I think, I think Sam, I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article twenty-nine. Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to designate the unappropriated 25% of the local meal and restaurant tax described as 830 CMR 64 H. Dot point, 6.5 for the purposes of funding affordable housing and to determine the effective date of such an increase or to do or take any other action on this matter on petition of Jordan Frye. You all probably recall, she did send us a letter saying that, you know, her perception of things have changed a little bit, and she probably wouldn't have pushed this at that time. And she was sort of withdrawing her support, but I told her that it was gonna have to go on the warrant anyways.
So I move that we recommend indefinite postponement at the request of the applicant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda. Do you want me to read the?
Yes, please.
Items? Okay. Under our consent agenda for 940, licenses, approve application for a change of manager of an all-alcoholic common victor license at Cape Club located 125 Falmouth Woods Road, East Falmouth. And since you're here.
Yes, I I stuck around. I have a babysitter.
Oh, my goodness.
Boy.
Oh, my goodness.
No, it's okay. It's okay. So the the only thing I saw, and this doesn't have anything to do with you, I'm sure, but that 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 someone needs to speak with the tax.
Yes. So Phyllis did make me aware of that before this meeting, and just said that you may address it. I did speak with the owner, and he said that it would be taken care of in full over the next two weeks or so.
Yeah, it doesn't reflect on your application.
Yes, right.
I thought everything looked good on her application. I would move approval unless anyone had.
I would second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. No, it's okay. Have a great night.
All right, too. Okay. Oh, go ahead. You wanna do it?
Administrative orders to authorize the Department of Public Works to apply for a shared street and spaces grant for a project on Curly Boulevard. And the second one is authorize town manager to execute memorandum of understanding between the United States Coast Guard and the town of Falmouth regarding fire protection, protection of life and property from fire and firefighting. Just have one comment on that, Mr. Suso. The the language that I read at the end of it said that this agreement will apply only to Falmouth and incidents in Falmouth. But as you know, we have mutual aid agreements with like Mashpee and Bourne and Sandwich or wherever might need assistance. If there was a a fire called in on a boat at a slip that was expected to be Falmouth and they responding, and they get out there and they find out it's in Bourne, they're not gonna stop their response. I mean, it seems like the language is kind of restrictive. I would hate to, you know how like we had that Nero's Law with, you know, now they can treat a an a police dog, but they would had to sit there and watch the dog die previously, and I don't wanna restrict, you know.
Well, I don't think the Coast.
Safety.
Yeah, I don't think the Coast Guard will stop their normal rescues.
This is, this is the Coast Guard's language. Yeah.
I think this is just because the only.
It's just that it's an agreement between Falmouth, but.
Yeah. We can't bind a third party. Like Mashpee's not a party to this, so we can't bind them in this agreement.
Right.
We can only bind ourselves and.
I just wanna make sure we're not making some kind of.
I move approval of those.
Oversight.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Suso for supplemental report?
That's everything on the agenda we're talking about. The remaining on.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
The consent agenda.
You gonna do the minutes?
I didn't get a chance.
I didn't really get to read them either.
I didn't get a chance to read the minutes.
I I reviewed them. I I did get them done. I didn't see anything that was particularly, questionable, some more small edits, and like, there's acronyms that aren't defined, but I...if you want to hold it off until the next time.
Can we hold it?
Yeah, I probably should at least look at it.
Okay, well, then, I'm going to pass this down to Peter so that he can take care of those, so they won't be there the next time.
Okay.
Want me to make a couple comments, Mr. Chairman?
If you'd like, certainly.
Just wanted to note, I've continued to attend the Finance Committee's weekly meetings in their preparation for the upcoming April Town Meeting, and of course, the Board's next regular business meeting will be Monday, March fourteenth, and you have a scheduled work session, as we've noted, for this Saturday morning, March fifth. And, Mr. Chairman, I have a brief statement I'd just like to read, three short paragraphs. Recently, an individual transmitted a misleading and misinformed letter to a local newspaper implying that the town was not acting responsibly and failing to consider applying for a grant application, which allegedly would result in, quote, "found money," unquote, to facilitate the hiring of firefighters, and in parance, rather than have Falmouth taxpayers pay for this. I recognize that, unfortunately. When something is put in writing or on social media, some persons are inclined to believe it regardless of false content. I want to affirm to the Board that consideration was given for the past several years for application of what is called a SAFER grant, S-A-F-E-R. This was also discussed with the Finance Committee a few years ago, when the Select Board and the town were considering what ultimately became a successful voter-approved override. At that time, the determination was made to pass on any such application. This was fundamentally due to the fact that one of the requirements of such an application is affirming that the town, and I underline, does not have the financial resources to fund firefighter positions. This also requires that the town claim, quote, "financial need," unquote, and specifically delineate anticipated, quote, "budget shortfalls," unquote. This, of course, as the Board is aware, would have been inaccurate and a falsification of Falmouth's financial circumstances. We operate with a professional code of ethics in conducting the affairs of this town, and in spite of what the letter writer is encouraging, we do not falsify the town's financial circumstances in a short-sighted effort to mislead and thereby secure federal funding. And I felt I needed to state that for the record, because I've gotten a couple phone calls from people that unfortunately read the letter and seemed to believe that it was accurate, and it indeed is inaccurate, as the Board is aware. We do not falsify our records in an attempt to secure financial aid. That's highly inappropriate at best, and we just don't function that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Suso. Anything else, or am I...
I need to mention a couple of things here that are coming up, events that are coming up, I just want to mention, but the Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association is going to have their meeting a week from Friday at eight-thirty at Sea Crest.
Right.
So, it's going to be here in Falmouth. There's, let's see, there's a Housing Assistance Corporation, that's an IANAS organization, that's hosting a Zoom webinar on village center housing, and it's going to be tomorrow, Tuesday the first, at three-thirty. And then the last thing is that there is going to be a Vineyard Wind Project Zoom webinar at six-thirty on Thursday, that's the third of March. So, those are just upcoming things that I thought you might...oh, and there was one more thing I wanted to mention. I got communication, and you may know more about this, Doug, from the county that indicated that that forty-one million dollar ARP of money was going to be controlled at the county level, and that we, towns were going to have to submit applications for projects to qualify for that.
Exactly.
And I just want to make sure that staff gets on top of that, so we get our application in, you know, we've got this sewer project coming up, we should take advantage of it and make sure that we've got our request in based on these that we have here in Falmouth.
Well, unfortunately, right now, the position of the commissioners has been that...Mr. Bergstrom explained during the meeting on Wednesday of last week that he wanted to make it clear that they were only addressing the first twenty million of the forty-one, which has already been received. And of that first twenty, they intend to disperse ten million amongst the fifteen towns by the application process. But when you look at the language of the ordinance, it refers to the entire forty-one million, so I'm a little troubled with that. I'm also troubled with the fact that I still don't have the written legal opinion of the State Ethics Commission attorney or the county attorney, which may still come in a timely fashion before the upcoming meeting.
Yeah, I didn't want to get into all the details of who...
It's part of my report, so...
Oh, I...go ahead, sorry.
So, I'm just saying, you led right into it, so when I get the opinion from the attorney for the Assembly of Delegates that I need to recuse myself, if that's the case, I'm going to definitely resign that position and immediately give notice to the clerk of the county that I'm resigning, and we'll try to work as quickly as possible, once we get the notice back from the clerk, to assign a new person to the role. And I'm going to ask the Speaker to consider the circumstances and potentially delay the vote to allow for a more fair, just discussion.
Mr. Chairman, could I piggyback on your comments, if I may? I know you're well aware of this. I think we should just note, for those listening, that the county commissioners, in what has been announced, have chosen to ignore the recommendation of the Select Board as well as many others on Cape Cod, and are not reallocating that money based on population in the same manner as it was distributed. So, they have chosen to go in a significantly different direction. So, I just thought we should note that. That is not what this board asked for, but they're going in another direction.
And other boards as well.
Correct, several other boards, quite correct.
And so, I think they're more reliant on their population survey, which was more generous towards the sharing of the funds, but in reality, I don't have a percentage of what amount of funds that people were thinking was appropriate, just that there's a perception that a lot of people in the county, I don't remember the number, but there was several, it was in the thousands, felt like there should be a shared approach. And so, they're kind of resting their opinion on that.
One of the dilemmas of those surveys, as you know, is that they can be structured to generate predictable results.
As mentioned...
Yeah, this was not a statistically random sample.
As noted in our conversation with the county assistant administrator, where she said, "Would you prefer a more equitable approach than our own?"
Exactly, well said.
We already made our point, and then she said, "Would you consider more equitable?" And we're like, equitable to who?
Exactly.
I think Peter made that point, huh? Where's the equity?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Nancy didn't vote against it.